Good evening. It's 5:02, the January 14th, 21. Laguna Beach Unified School District's Board Workshop Meeting is called order. Number one on the agenda is a procedural note on addressing the meeting through live public comment. While I do want to highlight that the board has received all written public comments via electronic submission through LBSD Public Comment Form, which is closed today at noon to allow time for us to receive it part of the meeting. On the agenda, you'll see notifications for live public comment. This moves us to number two for the agenda. You know, I was gonna, well, actually, sorry, need to call before we please call the goal to establish form.
Member Vickers?
No.
Yes, she's here. Member Kelly?
Here.
Member Osborne?
Here.
Member Perry is here but away briefly. And member Normindin?
Here. Thank you, Victoria. We can now move to number three since we have form. Dee was going to lead us in the pledge allegiance. I don't know if one of our student reps would like to do that. Soren, would you like to lead us in the pledge allegiance? I'm gonna turn off my video though so that I'm not standing up in front of this. Would everybody rise and place your right hand over your heart? I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America.
To the republic. For which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Jim, I could have just asked you to do that.
Yes.
I'm trying to pass it around so everybody gets it. Okay, so that brings us to see the adoption of agenda. Dr. Borri, are there any changes to the agenda?
We had a edit that we took, we shared with you today regarding the student board member, board policy, but that's been posted along with what we shared with you. So that's the only change.
Okay, so then we can still adopt it as presented since that was changed publicly as well?
Correct.
So may I, can I have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
So moved?
Second.
Okay, so. I should buy member Vickers and second by member Kelly. Any discussion? Victoria, can you conduct a board roll call?
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Osborne?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
I'm going to, member Perry not present at vote. And President Normindin?
Yes. That moves us to number four on the agenda, public comment for non-agenda items. Mr. Collin, you're the one's gonna alert us of anyone wanting to make public comment. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So while you're looking to see if anyone wants to make comment on non-agenda items, I was, just wanted to briefly say that the speaking time will be limited to three minutes per speaker, 20 minutes per topic. Staff will keep the time and mute speakers at three minutes. They'll notify the board president when we have reached 20 minutes on a topic with board consent. Board president may modify the time allowed for public comment. Mr. Collin, is there anyone wishing to speak on items not on the agenda tonight?
No, there is not.
Okay. Since there are no comments, we should move to number five, Brown Act Workshop. And first, public comments. Again, is there anyone, is there anyone wishing to speak on the Brown Act Workshop item? Let's see.
Not at this time.
Not this time? Okay, thank you, Mr. Collin. Well, with that, then we're gonna move to our attorney, Mark Breezy, who will present the Brown Act Workshop. And Mark, would you like questions asked as you go, as you're going along at the end or both? Like, how would you like questions from us?
I, my experience in this, this format is it's better to have them at the end. So if you just jot down, you know, anything you have, I have a PowerPoint presentation. I tried to keep it as simple and straightforward as possible, but. So if you could just jot down questions and then we'll have some time at the end for that. I think that's better.
Okay, well, the floor is yours then.
Okay, thank you. Before I share the, the PowerPoint, I want to just make a couple of comments that I typically make about the Brown Act in the, in a general way before I do a presentation like this. One is that I've often noted that it's a pretty counterintuitive, what I call counterintuitive body of law in that you have, in this case, five individuals who care enough about the local public schools to run for the board. And then they get elected to the board. And then they're muzzled more than anybody in the community on who they can speak to and speaking to one another and, and have to be the most careful about having conversations related to their role as a school board member. I'm not saying that the public policy is therefore bad. There's a very good public policy behind it. But it is something to recognize upfront. Another thing is, and this is what I call the, you know, cut yourself some slack aspect of it. It's complicated. Like a lot of, or most bodies of statutes, there's ambiguities in it. And because it's complex and because of your desire to speak about issues, it's easy to have slip-ups, Brown Act-wise. And one of the things that I've, I have pointed out, I'm not gonna go in other than these brief comments, go in, talk tonight about compliance and Brown Act litigation. Except to say that the legislature has recognized, in my opinion, this is how I choose to interpret it. The legislature has recognized that there will be mistakes. Because one example is a Brown Act lawsuit cannot be filed unless the agency has given notice of an alleged violation and opportunity to cure and correct it if they, if they believe that they have committed a violation. So you can't just go in the next day and file a lawsuit. You have to give the, the district a chance to fix it. Also, when you do get into litigation in the Brown Act itself, if a judge concludes that the board has substantially complied with the Brown Act, then there's no judgment against the, the board. And then the, the last part of that is that somebody alleging a Brown Act violation, and I just concluded a litigation for a school district in San Diego County on the Brown Act where this became the central issue, is the person who files the lawsuit has to also show prejudice, not just a violation of the Brown Act, but that they were prevented from exercising their public speaking comment rights in addition to just the bare violation. So the courts and the legislature have kind of recognized that this isn't easy. And so you obviously want to strive for 100% compliance, but it's not, it's not an automatic judgment or something against the district if you don't. And then finally, another thing I say preliminarily, that kind of is a, is an umbrella over a lot of Brown Act issues, is that sometimes perceptions related to Brown Act compliance and compliance with open government laws is more compelling in a community than the issue of legal compliance. And what I mean by that is, and I might make some comments here and there as we go through this, is if the public has a perception that things, decisions are being made in secret, that can be a disruption even if in fact, they're not, there are not decisions being made in, in secret. But there are some, some things that can occur that create that perception that I will be addressing here and there. Okay, I am going to share my screen now. Does everyone see that?
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, you know who I am and why, why we're here. And this isn't working. My slide advancer, so. There we go. Intent of the Brown Act is stated in the law. It's basically that the people of the state do not yield their sovereignty to the agencies that, which serve them, and the intent of the law is that actions should be taken open, openly and deliberations conducted openly. There are exceptions to that, obviously. One court stated it this way. "The purpose of the Brown Act is to facilitate public participation in local government and to curb misuse of democratic process by secret legislation by public bodies." That first part of that, I think, is an encapsulation of that prejudice requirement that I mentioned, to facilitate public participation. If there was a deviation from the Brown Act, but the individual still had an opportunity to participate, then in a lot of circumstances, the prejudice requirement is not met. What I have in a Brown Act session of this length, in other words, short, I've done Brown Act workshops that were basically all day, but this obviously isn't one of them. But I like to break it up by starting with what I call the Brown Act in a sentence. Because this sentence encapsulates all of the components of the Brown Act except for enforcement processes, which I'm, I already mentioned, I'm not gonna go into other than what I've said. And that sentence is, "All meetings of a legislative body must be properly noticed, open and public unless a closed session is specifically authorized, provide for public participation, and address only items posted on the public agenda." So that there are several components of that. Meetings, the definition of a meeting, most of the time will be taken on that subject, on what the definition of a meeting is, because that's the most common issue with the Brown Act. Legislative body, what is a legislative body? What constitutes properly noticed for purposes of a meeting? What closed sessions are authorized? What public participation is required in the meetings and public access? And the, finally, the, the requirement of dressing only items on the publicly posted agenda. So those are the components of the, the Brown Act and that Brown Act in a sentence, and it breaks down into these topics. Legislative body, meetings, proper notice, open versus closed session, public participation, and discussion, action on items, only, only on items on the agenda. Legislative body is pretty straightforward. It is the board itself. It is any commission, committee, or other body that the board creates through a resolution or some other formal action. The Brown Act embeds within it the authorization to create committees, subcommittees, standing committees, advisory committees. Some larger school districts where boards meet more often do this commonly. Most, most boards don't have them as a matter of, of regular existence. But any of those commissions, committees created by the board are also legislative bodies subject to the Brown Act. So all of the requirements stated would apply to meetings of those committees with one exception. And that is an ad hoc or temporary advisory committee composed solely of less than a majority of the board. So what that means is, the most common example I've seen is if a board is, is hiring a superintendent. The superintendent retires, the board's hiring a superintendent. They create a temporary ad hoc committee of two board members, in the case of a five-person board, to participate in or to screen applications and make recommendations to the board. As long as that advisory committee is composed solely of board members and it's less than a majority, then it doesn't have to comply with the Brown Act. But that is, that's a rare circumstance. So that's legislative bodies in a nutshell. And, and like I said, most of the time, we're just talking about the board itself. So what is a meeting? When does the board have a meeting? I mentioned that this is the most, the lengthiest part of, of this presentation and this slideshow, and it is the, the most complicated aspect of Brown Act compliance and interpretation. The primary definition of a meeting is what we're doing right now, although we're doing it virtually, not in what is typically done. But it is a gathering of a majority in the same place at the same time to hear, discuss, deliberate, or act on matters within the board's subject matter jurisdiction. You see, I have highlighted, italicized, changed to red font, "here, discuss, deliberate, or act," because there are some important distinctions, I think, as we move forward on this, on what constitute a meeting, what constitutes a meeting and what doesn't. Also, a meeting is a series of communications of any kind involving a majority of the board to discuss, deliberate, or act on a matter within the board's subject matter jurisdiction. Notice the word "here" is not in that definition, and I'll go into that further. There's a provision in the Brown Act, and the next slide is the actual language that leads to this series of communication bullet point. But there is an exception for individual conversations between a staff member and a board member, which are not prohibited as long as the staff member does not convey the position of any other board members to, to that board member that they are having a conversation with. And I'll, we'll, we'll go into this a little bit, in a little bit more detail later. This is the way the Brown Act is worded on what a serial meeting is. "A majority of the members of a legislative body shall not, outside of a meeting authorized by this chapter, use a series of communications of any kind, directly or through intermediaries, to discuss, deliberate, or take action on any item of business that is when the, in the subject matter jurisdiction of the legislative body." This was added to the Brown Act probably, probably about 10 years ago. There was an appellate court case where the, the Court of Appeal concluded that the legislative body, a majority of the legislative body had had engaged in a series of interactions between them involving a majority on the same subject, and that subject was, was in the subject matter jurisdiction of that legislative body. But the court concluded it was not a violation of the Brown Act because they did not come to an agreement on what they were gonna do. There was no what the court called a collective concurrence. There was no action taken. And they said, "That therefore doesn't violate the Brown Act." The legislature did not like that. The legislature quickly amended the Brown Act to add this provision to say, "No, a series of communication to discuss, deliberate, or take action is a violation of the Brown Act if, if that series of communication involves a majority of the board." And I will say, with some very recent litigation or legislation that, that just took effect January 1st regarding social media and answering some questions, it has only gotten narrower and more restrictive over time. Again, there was a time when board members could engage in a series of communications as long as they were only discussing something or even deliberating, as long as they waited until a meeting to make the decision itself. Not anymore. The, the, there was some disagreement on that, but the legislature has been definitive about that. Also important, and this is from case law, not only in a Brown Act context, but in other contexts, is that the word deliberate within a statute includes "the collective acquisition of information and exchange of facts preliminary to an ultimate decision." So there's very little difference as a practical matter between discussion and deliberation, between the gathering of information and discussing that information. And also, action taken does not only mean the actual vote or "all in favor, say aye," or "raise your hand." Action taken means any collective decision by a majority of members of a legislative body. You'll see this. We obviously don't discuss specifics in closed session, but there are a lot of times when in closed session, at least in my experience with boards, where it's just a series of thumbs up or head nods, or you see the consensus in the room. That's an action taken by the board. If a majority of the board is going in a particular direction, the same thing can happen at a public meeting. It doesn't have to be a formal vote. So some graphic, some graphics to kind of address these concepts. This is okay. If you have five board members and there's an email discussion between two board members or, or a face-to-face discussion between two board members, even if the discussion is on a topic within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. If you add a third board member, then you have a violation of the Brown Act. And you know, this is a conservative approach, but I think it is where courts would come down. Even if in this, in this particular graphic, there's an arrow from one to two and an arrow from two to three. Even if board member one and three don't communicate with one another, you're still involving a majority and discussion and, or deliberation is taking place. Board member number two has now been involved with a discussion with two other board members, and that constitutes board member number two having a discussion as a part of a, a series of communications that involves a majority of the board. So that is a, an issue. This is that exception that I talked about. A staff member, as long as the staff member doesn't say, using the numbers again, has a, provides information and answers questions with board member number one, then subsequently has a conversation with board number, board member number two on the same subject. As long as that staff member doesn't say, "I was talking to board member number one, and he said blank." Now you have, or you, you are starting down the road of involving a majority of the board in the gathering of information and the discussion, discussion of information. So this is okay as long as it is a back and forth and no lines from one board member to another, to another, to another. Sometimes that information goes out in an email. This is the reply to all problem. Where, and I've seen it in a variety of contexts. There are times when there's an issue that's coming to the board and board members have lots of questions. And so staff sends out something that says, "These are the questions we've received. Here's the information in response to it," and sends it to everybody. That's fine. That's common. But if one board member replies to all and says, "I don't think we should do this because blank," or "I think what's missing from this information is blank," or "answer to question number three doesn't satisfy me because blank." Now you have a majority of the board that is involved in a series of communication on that subject. So that is problematic. It's one of the reasons why we often, you'll, you'll see emails sometimes that say, "Do not reply to all to preserve Brown Act compliance," and things like that. And again, the, the interaction between more than two board members on a subject can create issues. And then there are new, and, and now it seems like it's becoming not so new challenges, but new if you're looking over a course of a couple decades with electronic communication. We used to have slides like this that were one you'll see later in the presentation. It used to say, "Probably not okay" because this area of the law wasn't clear. The legislature has addressed it, like the legislature tends to do. They seem to want to be full employment for lawyers. They've muddied the waters a little bit. But effective January 1, 2021, this legislation, AB 992, took effect. And it addresses social media and other electronic online platform communications. A lot of, you know, typical legislative language in there that is not easy to discern to the, the non-lawy, non-lawyer reader. But it basically says that members of a board may engage in separate communications on an internet-based social media platform to answer questions, provide information to the public, and/or solicit public input on matters within the body's jurisdiction. The way I read that is, individual board members can have a Facebook page in their role as a board member, where they might post their point of view on something, where they might ask for input from people, where they might answer questions that are embedded in comments on their Facebook page. The legislature has said that is permissible. It is, I get back to what I said before. "Here, discuss, deliberate, or take action" is when everybody's in the same physical location. But hearing or, you know, kind of a made sort of variation on hearing in the form of reading, two board members reading the Facebook post of another board member would not constitute a series of communications in violation of the Brown Act because it's only to hear it. If you're just intaking the information and it's through an online platform, it's okay. I think what the legislature has said is that exception for staff members to send information that, and answer questions as long as there's no communication. This is basically saying that board members can send information out to constituents and ask, and answer questions and provide input as long as there isn't a discussion amongst themselves. And here's where we get to kind of the next level of this, where it says, "A majority of the body may not discuss amongst themselves," and I had that in quotes because it's defined in the statute, "business of a specific nature." It doesn't say what distinguishes that between business of a general nature. I would say it's anything within the subject matter jurisdiction of the legislative body, which encompasses, discuss amongst themselves encompasses comments or the use of digital icons that express reactions to communications or any communications posted or shared or responses using emojis, the like button, retweeting, things like that. So the way I read this is, and it's pretty straightforward in this regard, is liking is a comment, is, creates a discussion. Any other emoji or icon or retweeting it by a board member to another board member's post is, is a comment as if there was a, a written comment. Then it says, and this is the bottom bullet, "Members also may not direct, directly respond to a social media communication made, posted, or shared by any other member of the same legislative body regarding a matter within the legislative body's subject matter jurisdiction." "May not directly respond to a social media communication." This doesn't say involving a majority. It says "to a social media communication." It's ambiguous in the law, but the way we interpret this is that this graphic that used to say "probably not okay" now says "not okay," and it's not okay in two different ways. It's not okay because It's not okay because of similar to what was done in a slide before. A Facebook post by member number one, a comment by number, member number two, and then a like by member number three. That is three board members involved. And each one chiming in on the subject. I think it is also based on this this uh bottom section, which suggests in the statute that even one comment to a Facebook post constitutes a violation. Now, keep in mind, this is for topics within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. So um you know, puppy pictures, taking pictures of of the the dinner you had or something like that, that's fair game. That's not within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. But the, you know, our best advice coming out of this legislation is individual board members can have a, an online presence and can comment online if if they choose on matters within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. Other board members can see it, can read it, but should not ever react to it within that online platform or react to it separate from that online platform unless they're in a meeting and that subject comes up. Even if it's a like. That it is, it it it's probably true based on this statute that if one board member posts a comment on Facebook and another board member likes it, and that's the only, that's the end of it. I don't know if the courts would say that is a directly respond to a social communicate social media communication. A single like might not cross the line. But then you have the problem of another board member not realizing that a board member has already liked it. And there's a third like and a fourth like, or a third like and then an angry face emoji or something like that. And now you're in uh in difficult territory. And it's all online for everybody to see. So the best policy in practice is to just not respond in any way, shape, or form. Emoji, button, comment, nothing. People sometimes ask, well, what about the First Amendment? What about my First Amendment rights? There has never been a First Amendment challenge to the Brown Act in California. There have been some challenges in other states. Basically saying that the open meeting laws, usually at the local level, not the state level. It's one of my pet peeves is the state legislature does everything in secret in their caucuses. And then they basically come out and the votes are a formality. But they make local agencies live by different rules. So but I I'm able to get over that pet peeve mostly. But there have been some lawsuits that have said, hey, the the these restrictions you're putting on our speech are a violation of our First Amendment rights. And they have not been successful. This is an old San Diego Union Tribune. It's just a screenshot of a of an op-ed written by a board member in the San Diego Unified School District. That's an expression of his First Amendment rights. And the the courts have basically said that these these uh open meeting laws don't violate the First Amendment because they don't prohibit s- speech entirely on these subjects. They just require that the speech, when it involves a majority of the board, be delayed to a point where they are in a notice meeting and having that conversation. So it's not a restriction on speech. And again, I don't know what your practices are or personal preferences, but all five board members could have a Facebook page and post their points of view on issues related to the district and speak in that way in that public forum of social media. The Brown Act doesn't prevent that. It's only a restriction on how the five of you communicate with one another. So that's a a meeting. And again, I I I don't have a slide on it, but I I want to also just point out something that I think at least the the experienced board members are aware of is that there is a a long list in the Brown Act of things that do not constitute a meeting. A purely social or ceremonial occasion. Attendance at a conference. Attendance at a meeting of another public agency. All of those are not violations of the Brown Act. But they all have the same language in them, which is as long as the members do not discuss items of business within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. So that's why a majority of you can attend a graduation ceremony. That's why a majority, and and you don't have to post the Laguna Beach High School graduation as a as a board meeting. That's why you can, a majority can go to the CSBA conference. When we get back to the day when we can actually go to a CSBA conference. And that's why a majority of you, if if three or more of you show up at a at a city council meeting, you don't have to have, you know, decide who's going to leave, so there's only two of you there. As long as you don't discuss board business while you're there. So um uh you know, even uh I I remember one time there was a circumstance where uh three board members ended up on the same supermarket aisle. And they were, they were asking me whether that was a violation of the Brown Act. I said, well, did you talk about board business? If the answer is no, then it's not. So the Brown Act does recognize that. Proper notice. The uh these are pretty straightforward and commonly known. For regular meetings must be posted at least seventy-two hours prior to the start of the meeting. For special meetings, posted at least twenty-four hours prior to the start. There are recently enacted website posting requirements, which I love your website, by the way. I think it's really cool. And but over off to the right, there's a button on the main page that says board agenda. That's a requirement now in the Brown Act for the last handful of years. It requires that the agenda contain a brief general description of each each item to be transacted or discussed at the meeting, including items in closed session. And that the Brown Act says that a brief general description of an item generally not exceed twenty words. Amending an agenda inside of seventy-two hours or twenty-four hours is generally not permitted unless it's to pull an item or makes non-substantive corrections. This happens all the time where there is, you know, something non-substantive. But there are restrictions, again, for for purposes of brevity. I don't have them in here. But adding a a new and different item to an agenda within seventy-two hours of a regular meeting cannot occur unless, except in very limited circumstances. There have been circumstances and it and it happens quite often, actually, where something comes up within seventy-two hours of a regular meeting. A board can address that item by posting a special meeting to occur before or after the regular meeting. So there are ways to address those. The basic standard for the agenda is it must reasonably apprise the public of the matters to be considered in sufficient detail to allow the public to determine whether to participate at the meeting. That's the basic standard. The best case that I know of on this standard and where a a board didn't meet it is the Carlson case. Where the agenda said continuation school site change. That's what the agenda said. Then at the meeting, the board moved the continuation school to a different site, which was an elementary school. Closed the elementary school and took action to send all of the students at that elementary school to a different elementary school. And the Court of Appeal said, you didn't let the public know what you were really going to do. The it it wasn't sufficient to inform the public. You know, I I like to use the standard of if I am a member of the public and I'm interested in topic A. When I read the agenda, am I going to know whether the board's going to be discussing topic A at the meeting? And if and if they discuss topic A and the agenda hides the ball on on that they're going to be talking about that, then that's an issue. It's very rare for something like continuation school site change to to come up. And this is, that's not a common Brown Act allegation that a agenda item was not sufficiently described. Closed sessions. There is a a long list of them. I'm not going to go through them in detail. But you cannot have a closed session unless there is a specific Brown Act authorization. This is a confidential topic is not necessarily enough. It has to fit into a specific authorization. Example, there's an incident at a school in the district involving a number of students. And it confidential because of student pu- pupil record, pupil rights confidentiality. You can't discuss that, you know, what happened at that school in closed session simply because there's confidential information associated with it. You can receive that confidential information from staff through a communique in the, you know, the one-on-one and and updates and things like that. But for example, for student issues, it's when an issue of student discipline comes to the board that you can have a closed session to discuss and deliberate on that for the certain levels of discipline for specific students. So it has to fit within a specific authorization. And when courts look at closed session authorizations, they're narrowly construed. Back to that first slide about the public policy behind the Brown Act. The presumption is open session. You have to be able to justify a closed session. And they're narrowly construed. Most closed sessions, because they are, have to be on a sp- uh within a specific authorization. Most of them are clearly within that specific authorization. Closed sessions are still meetings. Some of this was on a previous slide. It must be listed on the agenda. There's an exception in the collective bargaining law for school districts where a conference with your labor negotiators for purposes of collective bargaining is exempt from the Brown Act. A lot of districts put it on the agenda anyway when it's the course of the regular meeting. But the purpose of that exemption is if you are in, you know, a point where you're doing round-the-clock bargaining or almost round-the-clock bargaining and you're getting close to an agreement. And you want to be able to determine whether the board is supportive of of the union's latest proposal. You don't have to post a special meeting, wait twenty-four hours. You can get on a conference call, get on a Zoom call and have a discussion about it. That is an exception and a lone exception to the requirement of listing things on on an agenda. They have to be preceded by an open session disclosing disclosing the items to be discussed with public comment rights. And I have an asterisk there. I'll explain that in a in a later slide. And for some actions, there's a Brown Act provision that requires a report out, what we call a report out, where you have to announce the action and the vote of each member. Actions to impact the status of a public employee have to be reported out. Actions to conclude a settlement of litigation have to be pointed out. There's a a list of them in a specific Brown Act provision. The the general view that is almost universally accepted is based on the wording of that law, actions taken in closed session that are not on that list don't have to be reported out. I mentioned earlier that action taken is loosely defined. And sometimes action taken in closed session is to, for example, authorize the negotiators to propose something at the next meeting, collective bargaining meeting. If that had to be reported out, it would undermine the whole purpose of giving that direction. So that's one example. And receipt of confidential information is not a meeting and therefore not a closed session. Somebody probably about twenty years ago argued that five members of a school board receiving a copy of a opinion letter from legal counsel constituted a meeting because they all opened the same letter and they all read the same information. It got all the way to the California Supreme Court and the Supreme Court said passive receipt of information is not a meeting and therefore it's not a closed session. That wasn't a surprising outcome. And the more recent amendments to the Brown Act, which emphasize that you can hear or receive information outside of a meeting and it not constitute a meeting that's written into the Brown Act now have have clarified that. Public participation. Public must have an opportunity to address items on the agenda before or during the board's consideration of the item. Some districts, and I say, I usually say districts because that's who I represent. But the Brown Act applies to city councils, county boards of education, county boards of supervisors, et cetera. Some districts, they have all of their public comment at once at the beginning of the meeting on all agenda items. Other districts, I would say the majority of them, they have public public comment on agenda items, open session agenda items as the item comes up. They have a separate public comment for each one. But both are permissible as long as they're before or during. You can't have public comment on agenda items after you've already considered the agenda item. For regular meetings, you have to allow public comment on non-agenda items. That's the asterisk on public participation. Special meetings, you do not have to allow public comment on non-agenda items. You can limit it only to agenda items. And then the Brown Act states that the board can adopt reasonable regulations, including regulations that limit the total amount of time allocated for public testimony on particular issues and for individual speakers. Total time per speaker, total time per top- topic, total time for non-agenda public comment. There's a lot of variations on this theme that can be done, and they have universally been upheld. They haven't been litigated a whole lot, but they've been pretty much universally upheld by the courts. There uh and and in those decisions, and one in particular that involved a city council, there was an emphasis on the fact that a meeting that is subject to the Brown Act is a business meeting to get the board's business done. It's not a town hall to listen to public comment and go on for a long, long period of time. And a board is authorized to reasonably regulate total time per speaker, time per topic, time for non-agenda public comment. So um it it's very common for that, including in circumstances where there might be a very controversial topic with a lot of people who want to speak in uh an action that that ends up depriving some people of speaking as long as it's done randomly, as long as it's done in a way that does is not based on viewpoint. So that occasionally happens. I I attended a board meeting probably fifteen years ago where there were two hundred people who wanted to speak on one agenda item. And the the board asked for people to fill out speaker cards and indicate whether they were in favor of the item or against the item. They went, they waived their normal rule of twenty minutes per topic and went to an hour and reduced the three minutes per speaker to two minutes per speaker. But that didn't allow all three hundred to speak. And then they randomly drew an equal number of people who were for and equal number of people who were against, and that's how they did. And that's how they did public comment. And I think that's perfectly acceptable. Again, because the purpose of the meeting is for the board to get through its agenda and get its business done. So those, that, those kinds of things have been supported. Video or audio recording and photographing are, are rights of the public unless it prevents the conduct of business. Secret ballots are not allowed. In terms of access to information, agenda backup materials or public records unless they're exempt from disclosure. It used to be before online and easily posting of, you know, hundreds of pages of documents online. That there was more of a recognition that the Brown Act requirement for an agenda is just the agenda, the listing of items to be discussed or acted upon and a brief general description of each. That's what has to be posted publicly. There's no requirement that all of the backup materials be posted publicly. Most districts do post them publicly. It's easier to do that, but the actual requirement in the Brown Act is that they be made available to the public. And if materials are provided to the board after the agenda is posted within 72 hours, they have to be made available immediately on request. Again, in it, there, there are very few districts out there that I know of that don't just post all of the backup materials, except stuff exempt from disclosure with the agenda. And I, I always also like to caution about the, the danger of the perception of silent participation at a meeting. Conversations, three board members going off in a corner and having a conversation during a break in a meeting. I attended a meeting once where two board members were texting during the meeting. And for a period of about 15 minutes, when one board member was tapping on the thumbs on the phone, the other member wasn't. And the other member, when the other member was tapping on thumbs on the phone, the other member wasn't. It looked like they were having a back and forth conversation with one another. Violation of the Brown Act? No, it's only two of them. Does it look bad? It gets back to that perception thing. Yes, it looks really bad. So that perception issue can be problematic. And, and like I said, sometimes that perception of government and secret is worse than, it is, is a difficult thing for a board to get past if they are, are believed to be doing that. And then last slide on discussion limited to items on the agenda. The rule stated in the Brown Act is no action or discussion shall be undertaken on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. Except that members of a legislative body or its staff may. And then it, and then there are three things that individual members of a legislative body can do. You can briefly respond to statements made or questions posed by purpose, persons exercising their public testimony rights. So, and you're going to hear me emphasizing this more than once as I go through these. That's one board member briefly commenting to a speaker, not to another board member. Second, on their own initiative or in response to questions posed by the public, ask a question for clarification, make a brief announcement or make a brief report on his or her own activities. Almost every board meeting I've ever been to has board reports on it where board members have the opportunity to make brief announcements or brief report on their own activities. Again, that's the board member reporting to the public on their activities. Third is provide a reference to staff or other resources for factual information. Request that staff report back at a subsequent meeting concerning a matter. Or take action to rec, to direct staff to place a matter of business, business on a, a future agenda item. But again, that is direction from one board member to to staff regarding a subsequent meeting or for information. And so I say be careful. I was general counsel at San Diego Unified for two years, several years ago, and I, I, one of my requirements was to attend every board meeting and sit at the dais. And I remember saying at one point, I think I should have a Brown Act penalty flag that I could just toss and toss up in front of the board president and say, you know, stop. Put a stop to what's going on. The most common circumstance where I would have tossed the Brown Act penalty flag is, is this. And again, back to what I said at the beginning. Board members care about all this stuff. You don't get to talk with one another in any kind of collective way until you're at a meeting. You wait to get to the meeting so you can have that collective conversation. And then even still, you're constricted by the agenda. It's, it's frustrating. But it's important to stay within those boundaries. And and again, I, I say that not as a criticism of the Brown Act because of the, the basic principle that people who are interested in items within subject matter jurisdictions should be able to attend, comment, hear the deliberations and be a part of it. And I think that's important. So those are the, that's the Brown Act in a sentence with each of the parts that I've talked about and we'll go to questions and answers and I'll stop the share. Carol, you're.
Thank you. I thought I ended there. To make sure we don't miss anyone, I'd like to go around the room or, you know, around our little boxes. And, and maybe if everyone can ask or make two comments and then, you know, we'll just keep going around till everybody has everything answered. And that's why we don't miss anyone. And, um, because these little boxes are hard to see. Yes. Does that work for you too, Mark?
Yes.
Okay. Does that work for you guys? Yeah. Like a thumbs up or a head no. Okay. Okay. So let's do that. So member Vickers, would you like to go first?
She's muted.
You're, yeah, she's, she's trying.
She's trying to unmute, but it's not.
Well, I'll go to member Perry, then we'll come back again.
Okay, just a couple of questions for clarification. So information to all board members before a vote. Can a board member give like a, a research study to all the board members before a vote?
Can, can one board member share information with the rest of the board on a subject? I think that is, I, I wouldn't say that's uncommon. But because the, the issue of deliberation or the definitions of discussion and deliberation are broad. And, and in that one slide I mentioned deliberation includes the collective acquisition of information. I think the, the best the best way of making sure you're inside the, the, the boundaries of the Brown Act is for that research study, to use your example, that it comes from staff out to the board. Can one board member ask the superintendent, I would like this to be shared with the board prior to the meeting? Yes, that's an individual conversation between the two of you. Can two board members without involving a majority share and talk about a research project? The answer to that is yes, as long as it doesn't involve a third one. But I would advise against one board member sending information out to others. I don't know. There, there are many kinds of examples of research studies, but if it's one that says, you know, blank is terrible for children. And you say, I think you should all read this. It sounds like you're expressing an opinion on a particular topic to the rest of the board. As opposed to it coming from staff as being just FYI and not identifying the board member who asked it to be sent.
Okay, that's, that's helpful. So my second one quickly, you gave the example of the board meeting that you went to, that there were maybe 200 people there that wanted to speak, maybe it was 300. I don't know. And the board did it, did a good job of extending their time to an hour and having each one two minutes. And you said what they did is they had people sign cards, talking about if they were pro whatever it was or con. And then they took an equal number from both. Is that right?
Randomly took an equal number from both.
So what, what if you did that and four fifths of your cards are pro and one fifth is con? You know, it doesn't seem right that you would take an equal number from both.
I, I, oh, I see the in other words, the bowl, I don't remember if they put them in a bowl or just in a pile, but the stack of pro was five times higher than the stack of con. I don't remember, I'll, I'll answer it in this way. I don't remember if they announced how many people had submitted cards for and how many people had submitted cards against. I think it would be a good idea to do that. But I think even if it was five to one, I think randomly drawing the same number of cards from each side was, would be considered if it was challenged or reasonable regulation. I don't think it happened. I, I mean, this was just for, you know, more clarity. This was a board action to add actual or perceived sexual orientation to the district's nondiscrimination policies before it became a part of state law. Tremendously controversial and it was about 50 50 in the room. And it was actually the student board member who had made the proposal that their policies be amended to do that. So there were a lot of students involved too. So in that case, it was about 50 50, but that, that's a good question. That would, would a judge say, well, because it was five to one pro, you know, pro versus con, there's, it should have been that proportion. I doubt it, but it, it's a possibility.
Okay, thanks. I was just asking for us for the future. Okay. Next.
You're muted, Carol.
She's, member Vickers, are you, are you ready now?
Yeah. Okay. I just really had a comment that I had some concern. I mean, it is what they changed the law to, but the Facebook posting, it just almost seems a way that it allows board members to circumvent. If you put a, a strong opinion about something that's in the district's jurisdiction on your Facebook page and the other board members can all look at that. I mean, it's just a comment because you stated that's, that's allowed, but that just does not seem to me to be what, what the intent should be. So I, for me, I would not do that because it's like it's a way of circumventing what the intent is. Thanks.
Okay. I agree with that. Member Kelly?
I have no questions. I think Mark did an extremely good job with the presentation. It was very clear.
Okay. Member Osborne?
Thanks, Mark. Yeah, I agree with Jim. I do have just two clarifying questions. Mark, you mentioned on receipt of information from staff. The, the problem with reply all. So I want to clarify, if I have a, the board receives information from staff and they have a want or desire to ask additional questions. Is it advisable to ask that question via reply all with the instruction for board members not to reply all to that and then let staff? You know what I mean? So that the rest of the board is seeing the question that's posed.
I, I no, I think if if a board member receives, let's use the example of the same information going out to all five board members. I think the best practice is if you look at that as potential spokes in a wheel is to not connect any of the, you know, the round part of the wheel to keep it just the spoke. So I would, I would advise that the board member with a follow-up question sends that question to the staff member that sent the information. And then that staff member could say, I received a follow-up question from a board member. This is the question. Here's the additional information and send that out.
That helps a lot. So in, in asking that additional question or follow-up question, we could even remind when replying with the answer, please include the board, the rest of the board. That would still be permissible.
Yes.
Okay. And then I wanted to comment on member Perry's or ask kind of a clarifying question because I had written down that the majority of the board can hear and receive information. And I think possibly actually responding to member Vickers comment on Facebook, like you could hear, be hearing and receiving that information individually, but not discussing it. So that's one interpretation of the, the social media piece. But the, that collective acquisition of information issue that member Perry brought up. Would it be permissible, say there was a search study that we wanted to share and you already advised us that wouldn't be advisable to send that out to everybody because it might, you know, people might be able to, to figure out an opinion or it might be construed as deliberation. Could the staff then include a section of studies that were then anonymized, right, that we might want to be sharing amongst each other? Does that question make sense?
Yes. I, I mean, I think so. And I think the answer is yes, that either either without a request from a board member or if a board member says, I'd, I'd like this study to be distributed to the board for that to occur and more studies be distributed to the board on the same subject. I think as long as the and I think Jan's comment is a very good one. And I think that one of the things that with social media, if you think about it outside of a social media context, a board member had, you know, had the authority to stand on the street corner with a bullhorn, you know, within certain and, and, and speak. And if you tell board members they cannot speak in this online platform, then you're, then, then you're really running into First Amendment problems where the First Amendment line is not crossed is when you're restricting the communication between board members in the process. And that's why I consistently recommend that. I, I think it's even dangerous, although maybe some would say unreasonable or unrealistic. It's even dangerous to stick to the two board members having a conversation and it's only those two board members because it's easy for it to end up involving a third one. That the best way, using the example I gave before, is that information comes to board members from staff. Requests for information from, from board members goes to staff. And then the staff is responsible for getting the information out. I've even worked with some districts recently on kind of some talking points for board members to have. Because you talk about perception, sorry for the lengthy answer here, but there was a member of the public that was very interested in a particular subject. And she set up a meeting with all five members of the board. And so she had a separate meeting with all five members of the board. The board members, at least as far as I know, none of them talked to one another about those meetings. But then she came to a board meeting on that subject and during public comment said, I know four of you support this because I've had conversations with all of you. And it raised the perception that you know, how do we deal with conversations with individuals like that? And we developed talking points for board members to say, I hear you. I think this is great information, but I can't really share with you because you're going to be talking to other people that I can't really share with you my point of view on this until I have the opportunity to convene with the rest of the board and discuss it in a public forum, hear from them, have them hear from me and then make a decision. That's tough to do. I, I, I totally get that. But it's another example of how keeping But it's another example of how keeping that a, you know, just the spokes where the hub is the staff and the information goes from. Staff to individual board members. And then you complete the wheel of discussion and deliberation about that topic when you're in a board meeting. Is, is the best way, best way to go.
Now that helps and that's a, you know, if I remember Kelly or remember Perry or any members, remember Norman and have research studies, at least we have a. Just based on this conversation, have a way to get those out maybe in our weekly update without violating the Brown Act or, or coming close to it. So thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, Mark, I have a few, but I'll do my two and then we'll go around and see. So clarification, because the social media thing, kind of the fact that we can hear. What's kind of changed my thought, but so board member A speaks with board member B about topic X Y D. That's going to appear on the next agenda or is within jurisdiction. Then both board member A and board member B separately speak with board member C about the same topic. Right, if they're just. So, so that's a violation. Right, even though, because they're having a discussion or because they're just hearing them, because.
I think it is, I think it is a violation. The, the amendment to the law that I told you about after that court case that said they didn't come to a collective concurrence. The, the exception to the rule specifically refers to staff and not other board members. It hasn't been tested in the courts. There is some ambiguity there. But I think. Whenever you involve a third board member to the point where there's one board member who has communicated with two others, even if the two others haven't communicated with one another. That's a majority of the board, it's a series of communication involving a majority. And there's discussion about an issue. And so I think best practice is to, to not cross that line of the third board member until you're in the meeting.
And what if there's not a discussion and there's just a. Member A and member B speak with each other and they have a concern. And one just expresses the concern. And then they, whichever one called member C expresses a concern. Called D, right, and they, so they're expressing their concern, so they're just being heard, they, I don't want you to even make a comment, I just want you to hear my concern. Is that a violation? The social media thing messes things up for me, like it messes up like the hurt things messing me up.
Yeah, I, I think. Let me use a, an analogy. You have one board member who. Speaks with the other four board members, doesn't say a word and just listens to what they have to say. Even though that board member is not speaking. Obtaining that information, considering that information, thinking about what other board members said is deliberating, even if they never vocalize anything. It's, it's, you know, the back and forth inside, inside their head, so. It, again, hasn't been the subject of any published court decisions. But like I said, I think I, I have to believe that the legislature was deliberate when they used the word staff when they were talking about. Providing information, answering questions as long as the position is not conveyed. That, that's. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, that, I'm, so if, correct me, you don't, so if that has, I know you don't want, you don't want to talk about how you cure it. Do you use that, what you said, you don't want to have that discussion because it takes it too long? But I was just gonna say, do you just like, let's say, let's say I did that, let's say I called two of my members. About different things and I realized I talked about the same topic, would I just go, oh, I need to cure that? And how would I cure that? Like, how do I just then?
I'll try, I'll, I'll try to be quick here, there's, there's two kinds of Brown Act lawsuit, lawsuits. One is to negate an action that was taken in violation of the Brown Act. The other one is to stop violations of the Brown Act that don't involve actions. What we're talking about is the second one. Cure or correct is the first one. If you, you know, if, you know, Jason came to a meeting and say, ah, gosh, I forgot to put this on the agenda, but we need to approve this contract with this vendor. So let's add it to the end of the agenda. And you approved it. And somebody said, wait, that's a violation of the Brown Act, that's an action taken. Cure or correct would be for the board to come back and affirmatively negate the prior approval and then reconsider it and cure it. If you're talking about serial communications, just discussing things among board members outside of a meeting. That is a cease and desist letter where they have to tell you why they think you're violating the Brown Act and, and the district have, would have an opportunity. To send a letter saying, thank you, we, and expressing what I think the law says, something like a, an unqualified commitment to compliance with the Brown Act in the future. Where you basically say, oops, yeah, we made a mistake, we won't do it again. That's not, that's a different kind of action, but you don't, you don't need to cure or correct something unless it's an action taken.
Oh, that's so helpful. Okay, I'll pass it back around to see. Member Vickers, do you have, still nothing, member Perry, do you have more questions? Or concerns or comments? No, okay. Looking for the square, I don't know where Jim went. There you are. Jim, are you still good? No comments, questions? Kelly, do you have any more questions?
No further questions.
Okay, I'm gonna continue with a few more then if that's okay, Mark. So. You spoke about perception, are there any tips on how to change that perception or what to do around the perception? Or information, maybe you could send us to the Jason that maybe you could share around that, that. Because that's like every time I, I don't hear it the often the way I hear it, it just hurts because I'm like, we do everything, we don't talk to each other, we avoid each other because. You know, we, we avoid other people to not have these conversations and make comments about things, so we take it all very seriously, so, and I said.
Well, in. Nothing immediately comes to mind because the, the issue of perception, you know, I talked about. The, the texting example and, you know, I've seen. You know, other circumstance like that or the, the conversations on the side and things like that. But sometimes the perception that comes up is because. Boards practically don't, they, they, they have almost no discussion on every item. It's just, you know, motions, second, any discussion, no discussion, any questions, no questions, okay, let's vote. And if that's known on every item, then people can think, okay, that looks like they've already decided. Sometimes it's based on actual, the perception arises from actual past violations. And you get, you have to overcome that. But I agree with you, I, you know, I will say this, I will, I agree with you on. The, the commitment that the Laguna Beach Unified Board has on, on the issue of compliance, just having. A workshop like this is, is a demonstration of that. But, you know, other than those, you know, kind of anecdotal. Examples that I have, I can't think of anything specific.
And then kind of piggyback on what Dee had said around public comment. I know since the pandemic, we've had at times so much public comment and we're reading them out loud, which is even more exhausting. But I don't think we're as effective. When we're actually getting down to the business, right, and I think we even had to have more meetings because of it. How do you go about, we have these norms, right, that we listen, you know, we, we extend the time, we listen, so how do you go about that? In changing or, right, so that, because the purpose is to get the business done, not that we don't want to hear people. Have you seen your clients do that successfully?
I'm not, I'm not sure, do what successfully?
Like, like cut down how long people speak or, I guess we did go to two minutes, that's right, we did once, we went to two minutes for each speaker and that did seem to help. I think it's just hard, I guess for us it felt hard to make any changes to any of that because. We want people to have the ability to speak.
Well, yeah, my experience and including, you know, the handful of times I've been at your meetings is that you are flexible. I think that more often than not, the. You know, this, the circumstances like the one I mentioned, which was the Grossmont Union High School District, which is, is a large. High school district in, in California. Where you have, you know, larger crowds at board meetings and, and on some topics, sometimes more people that want to speak. It, it happens more often in districts like that, in larger districts than it does in smaller districts. And. But I, I, I mean, I, I really think that it's, it's situational. You know, I would say that, and, and this really isn't legal advice as much as that practical perception advice is if you have. If you have thirty people that want to speak on one item. At a meeting where you have two items on the agenda, I think that calls for a different response than. A meeting where it would probably take three and a half hours even if nobody spoke. And so you want to, you know, look at the situation, but think about, you know, when are we going to get our business done? Some boards have a bylaw that says their meetings will not go past a certain time. And they factor that in when they're trying to arrange the agenda and things like that. So I think it's situational and I, I advise flexibility. But I don't think the public comment, you know, basically what the law is, is that the public comment. The right to public comment is not a right to preclude the board from getting their business done and getting through their agenda at a meeting.
Well, you said that part, I had never thought about that part of it, right? So really, that's what really, it was a shift for me, I was like, well, how do you do it? But, okay, we could take care of the how to do it, flexible.
One thing, real quick, I, it's something that I, I didn't mention that I sometimes mention when I'm doing this is, I don't even know if it's ever come up in your district, but. In terms of public comment rights. There is no right for a member of the public to say, I'm giving my three minutes to Mark Brzee. And then another one saying, I'm giving my three minutes to Mark Brzee. Now Mark Brzee gets to speak for nine minutes, there's no right to that, you can have a policy unless you want to adopt that in a policy. But that is a reasonable regulation also, is that you don't allow people to grant their time to other people.
And that is, that's the law as it is, we don't have to have a policy or we need a policy that says that, I'm sorry.
No, I think you can, you can have a policy that allows people to do that.
They don't have.
Yeah, I don't recommend it necessarily, but, but it, it, you don't have to have a policy that says people can't do that.
Yeah, we had, we had that happen twice, Jan's probably seen it much more than I did, but Dee and I have been on it, it's been twice. So a few more, one is, can you define, since we're talking about the Brown Act, the ones of the Brown Act? Because I hear the words interchangeably, when you're speaking about it tonight, so I'm making sure I understand. A vote, a consensus, a firm and like board action, like how those, because people will interchange them, but are they distinctly different? Or are they, are they interchangeable? To vote, to affirm.
All of, all of them are action taken. So when the board, when the, the Brown Act says you can't take action on an item on, on the agenda, that's not on the agenda, I'm sorry. If at a meeting, three board members say, I want a, I, I want this to happen. Three board members say it. And the, the understanding coming out of that is that that's direction from the board to do something. Then that's, that's technically an action taken. And so. It. You just, you sometimes hear, yeah, we did that, but we didn't take a vote, there was no motion, no second and no vote. That's not the, the standard, the standard is that a majority of the board decides something, that something was going to happen.
Okay, that's helpful because they are interchangeable, okay, that's very, very helpful, and then, and then last. In, in reference, as it relates to the Brown Act, we have that, an item board members request that we put at the end of our meetings. For board member requests for information, suggestions for items for future meetings. It seems like it has a potential to violate the Brown Act inadvertently, it's not our intent. It allows us to, you know, announce and speak to something that's not an item on the agenda, so there's no public notice. We could find ourselves asking for clarification and inadvertently ended up in a discussion. And then it's also, we're giving consensus or taking action on something that, you know, by directing the superintendent by something that isn't on the agenda, so just. So I don't know if you could speak to those concerns. About that item as it relates to the Brown Act or if it's fair to put that because of the complexity in writing. I'll let you stop.
I, I think that, that rises to the level of specificity that I think I should. Look at that and, and provide some, some feedback on it outside of a, a, a public meeting. And maybe even, maybe even look at some of your, you know, how that's played out in recent meetings. In order to, to get a clearer understanding of, of how it's, it's played out.
That would, that would add value to us, to us, that'd be great.
Yeah, we had, and we had, I think that item used to say, include and general comments. And there was some discussion about, okay, let's, you know, let's try to rein that in. And make sure we stay within the parameters of the Brown Act and that's something that we'll, we'll look into.
Okay, and then. I would, I think that it might be good if we put it aside for right now until we hear back from you, so if not before this next meeting is what I'm saying, but. But when we get down to our next item, the governance team protocols, can you help maybe point out, I think there's some duplicity, right? Where maybe with the things that we wanted to achieve, when we added that item board member request, maybe we could achieve in other ways that are more Brown Act friendly. So, but so when getting to that piece, if there's, if you can point out, that'd be awesome.
Okay.
Can I add a little something to what Carol was asking and I'm, I'm glad you did? Mark, when you put up limited to items on the agenda, one of, one of the things that you said was. That a board member could ask a staff member for more information. And a board member could ask for an item to be on a future agenda. But I think we've gone away from that where now it has to be at the end of the meeting and the whole board has, or the majority has to approve that. So I, it doesn't sound like we're able to do that anymore.
Well, there is. There's a difference between what the Brown Act authorizes without crossing a line. In terms of, you know, briefly requesting information, briefly asking a question, briefly commenting to a, a, a public speaker. And what the district and the board decides its protocols are for, for putting something on a meeting agenda. Those are two separate topics and, and not every district, every board has the same port protocols for placement of an item on an agenda. Those are two separate topics and, and not every, um, district, every board has the same port, protocols for placement of an item on an agenda. So the Brown Act authorizes that, but that's an authorization. It's not a, a, a right of a board member. The, the board as a collective body in, in, in developing bylaws decides what the, um, the, uh, how that's done.
So, for example, if a person came in like we've had before and was upset about pesticides being used. And, you know, one of us said, oh, could we find out what percentage of what we use as pesticides? Then would it just go silent then? And the staff couldn't agree to do that? Or would the rest of the board say, we have to weigh in on it? I, I guess I'm not clear how that works.
Well, it depends on what your, um, you know, I'll go back to what I said before. It depends on what your, your bylaws, your protocols that are, um, developed by the board. The, there's an ed code section that says the board adopts rules for its own governance. How those things are done, there, there are separate provisions. Separate from the Brown Act regarding, um, uh, school board meetings and, and school board rules and regulations and things like that. So, you know, I think it depends on what the, uh, um, the, the, the bylaws are. My concern in a circumstance like that with a, you know, go back to the continuation school site change. If, um, to use an, to use your pesticide example, if a board member asks a question about pesticides and it launches into a board discussion about pesticides and there's nothing on the agenda that says the board is going to be talking about pesticides, then going back to my example of would a person reading the agenda who is concerned about pesticides know, okay, I need to come to this meeting because the board's going to be talking about pesticides? If the answer to that is no, then the board shouldn't be talking about pesticides at the meeting. Now, I know that's different than your, uh, direct question of a board member wanting information about pesticides. I know of some districts where that is, that's never done at board meetings. It's done by a board member requesting information from staff on a subject, and then the staff gets the information out to the entire board. I'm a big proponent and, and I'm nowhere near alone on this, that information that goes to one board member should go to all board members, um, so that you're all working from the same body of information. So, um, in some districts, it's never a topic at a meeting. It's never a topic of request for information. It's never a topic of, um, placement of items on the agenda. In some districts it is, and it requires a board majority to place an item on agenda. In some, um, it's individual board members can place an item on an agenda either, either during a meeting um, or in a separate way. That is a decision for the board as an entity to make on how, um, those, those things are going to be done.
Well, I know from your example, I, I completely agree that the board should all have the same information. But if the other board members don't agree that you should get that information, that makes it hard or, or.
Yeah.
I think that's been a priority in my experience through a, a, a number of recent superintendents that very clearly that, uh, information that went to one board member went to all board members based on a, a board member asking a question, uh, based on a board member asking for information at a meeting. I just don't, I don't see that as an issue that we've had here that some receive information and others don't. I think it's been, um, uh, adhered to.
I, I agree totally.
And, and.
I'm saying though.
I want to make a comment here just, you know, for what it's worth. I know that board protocols and, um, is, is also on the agenda. But I think we're starting, we're starting to move to that conversation. This is, this is really not about the Brown Act anymore.
I had one more question that I thought of though. Is that okay, Carol?
Yes, go ahead.
On, uh, public participation and something you said made me think that's an, it's an, uh, a concern that we've had here that's been, I would say, not all speakers, but how is, how do you handle it when the speaker, uh, addresses an agenda item, but speaks on something else and does that repeatedly?
It is, uh, that's, that's a tough thing. I mean, it's, it's tough. And, and I mentioned, uh, the size of districts. There are some districts where their meetings are in an auditorium. And the board president has a switch and they can cut the microphone. But which sometimes only makes the person start yelling.
Yes.
The bottom, yeah, the bottom line is, um, there, it's very difficult for a board to do anything when faced with somebody who doesn't respect the rules and doesn't respect the fact that when they're speaking on an agenda item, the, the law gives them the right to speak on that agenda item, but absolutely no right to, to speak on, on other items. That's for a different part of the agenda, if it's a regular meeting where they can speak on non-agenda items. So it is a, uh, you know, there's, there's, there's very little you can do other than, uh, you know, and I've seen, you know, gaveling down. I have seen and there have been circumstances where, um, and I, you know, this isn't legal advice. This is just, um, from my experience where a board has said, you're not entitled to speak at meetings anymore because you will not, you, you continually flout the rules. You don't abide by them. You don't care. And so we're not going to recognize you as a speaker anymore. And they're willing to, um, go in front of a judge and say, this is why we did it. Um, and this is why the person has lost the prerogative to do that. No case law on that subject. And that's a, that's an aggressive, um, thing. But at the end of the day, you have to hope that, um, people will understand that these are the rules. And, you know, I'm going to stay within those swim lanes and, and stay within those rules and not abuse them. And, and, you know, remind them at every chance you get that, you know, you're off topic. This isn't about that. You need to be speaking about it. And, you know, I've seen also where, okay, the person's coming up again. Now, this, this is our agenda item. Are you going to be speaking about this agenda item? But again, sometimes the answer is yes, absolutely. And then they don't. And you do what you can.
No, when, when they don't, Mark, interrupting them seems to just upset them and they want more time because they're like, use my, use part of my three minutes. Right? When you're like, this isn't, you're not speaking to the agenda. I'll get there eventually. Like, so. Is that also you're just flexible in knowing your speakers, like style?
It, it, you know, easy for me to say, harder for you to do, but it's not their three minutes if they're not talking about the agenda item. They have zero minutes, zero seconds to talk on non-agenda items. Or, or to, um, to not, um, speak to the agenda item.
I love the way you put the words together like that.
I, uh, earlier I saw Soren, um, with his hand up is, uh, I don't want to, but did, did he, the student board member?
He's a student, yep. Soren, would you like, would you like the floor?
Is that okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, so I just had a question. You were talking earlier about social media and I wasn't sure if made this distinction, but is it, d- d- does the legislature say you can't have meetings on social media if given the appropriate time in advance? I was, I was wondering about that because, and then what, and then what would that go into if, if you can't have meetings on social media? And, and what, I, I was just wondering if that was like, um, a possibility, a possibility within legislature?
Maybe I'm not savvy enough, but I'm, I'm going to interpret what you mean by meetings on social media. Um, I mean, I know like Facebook, uh, live, there are, um, there are ways to, uh, to do that. I don't know if there's a way to have like in a Zoom format to have a number of people. Uh, come together in that format. Some school districts, they're, uh, um, they broadcast their meetings on YouTube. But no, the legislature hasn't said you can't have meetings on, um, electronic platforms. And they've relaxed the rules by executive order. Um, because of the pandemic. The, the Brown Act, pre-pandemic, um, addressed, uh, has provisions on teleconference meetings, which used to mean just a speakerphone. Um, but now, um, in, especially now that we've, uh, become much more savvy in platforms like this, I expect it to be, uh, done a lot more in the future. The Brown Act allows teleconference meetings, um, but it's within certain parameters. Um, normally this is not, uh, currently, but normally, the teleconference location has to be open to the public. The agenda has to be posted at a teleconference location. The agenda has to identify where the teleconference location is and the, um, a majority of the board has to, um, be participating in person. Those are the normal Brown Act rules. So it already allowed for some kind, some forms of electronic participation. It's completely wide open now. But what the, what the legislature has done recently with the Brown Act relates to individual board member communication and, uh, use of social media, not the collective use of, of social media. It's an, it, it, it's interesting to see, um, because of the pandemic and because, um, we've become so much more savvy with platforms like this. If there, there will be, the Brown Act will authorize, um, platforms like this and meetings to continue after the pandemic. And it, it would also be interested to know whether, um, boards will want to do that. I think, uh, you know, there's, there's definitely a benefit to being in, in the same room. But, uh, I hope that answers your question, or, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else with any questions on the Brown Act? Does anyone need a break? Okay, okay. We'll just keep looking forward then. Then, um, so there's no more questions. Then we'll go see, um, what we're doing, you said. We'll move to how, move to what we have adopted for our own governance. On number six, board governance protocols, and we will start with public comment. And, uh, Mr. Collin, is there anyone wishing to speak on the board governance protocols?
Yes, the firsthand of, bring Sherry Morgan in.
And as a reminder, it's, uh, three minutes and on the topic on this particular one, board governance protocols. Hi, Sherry, you can.
It's, uh, I'm not sure if it's on her end or my end. It's not allowing me to invite her in.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Oh, how are you?
Good evening.
Um, good evening. Um, I wanted to thank you for having this opportunity to have these workshops. I think it is very important for there to be clarifications. I, and understandings. I would think that it would benefit to be able to have a back and forth conversation about the, the, what the Brown Act is all about because to be able to ask questions is great, but if you all are dialoguing, and I don't know how this would, based on all of these protocols and formats, what would be the right forum? But it might be beneficial to be able to have a back and forth conversation with the public and the constituents on the Brown Act and how it works. I know, um, there was conversation about the Brown Act and how you can limit minutes. Um, and certainly we've had a lot of topics this year that have been, um, of high interest and generated a lot of conversations. So when you're doing the protocol and putting, um, the, how your board meetings are going to work or the governance protocols, I would think that anything that is being, um, considered on how you address the public with, uh, notifying them of their, um, of their rights during the meeting, if you're going to limit the numbers, if you're going to send, not allow them to speak in the protocol. And it, maybe it's a bylaw. That's why we're here to make sure that it's a vote, that, that it can't be one person's discretion as to whether or not somebody should not be allowed to speak or that somebody has, um, wavered too far off topic. Sometimes it takes people a while to warm up to get to their point. And, um, it is distracting to be interrupted. So I think considering that, um, that you had brought that up, it's something that should be explored and discussed a little bit because I think that, um, you know, sometimes it, it, as I said, sometimes it just takes people a while to get to their point. And to cut them off or shut them down, I wasn't sure when I was supposed to start because two different people were talking. And, you know, seconds matter when somebody's trying to make a point. So, um, as you go forward with these, I would, that would be something to, that I would like to see considered. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Collin, is there anyone else?
Uh, no, there's not.
Thank you so much. With that, uh, we will go into, um, one, everyone has had the chance to read hopefully the handbook, the background that Victoria provided and, uh, all the governance protocols. I know that it's on, um, I want you to have a copy of it, however they have that formatted. And so I'm assuming that everyone's going to have questions and want to have discussions that might be easy to go, easier to go around the table and have everyone kind of bring up what they want to discuss, um, so that we don't miss, miss anyone. Would that work? I don't see Jan, so, um, remember Perry, would you like to start by, uh, we can, I, we don't need to go through every one of them. The objective tonight is that we've reviewed them. That's what we're required to do by law. And then if in reviewing them, if we have any discussions or questions or edits or whatever, that we would talk about them here. I thought it might be easier to send it around the room than to go one, two, three down the list.
Okay, um, I guess I'd like to start by saying that I think it's really important and we should encourage a diversity of opinion. And so this, this unity, this one voice, um, uh, is bothersome to me. When, when we say we speak with one voice, once decisions are made, we collectively.
Which policy number are you referring to?
I'm on unity. On the, we're doing protocols.
Oh.
We're, we're doing our protocols.
So does that, you know, uh, that does not seem democratic. I mean, it seems like you're almost asking someone to lie. For instance, like if, if Board President Normandin doesn't think it's safe for students to go back to school, so she votes against it and the majority votes for it, it doesn't seem like she should have to go around saying, well, I think it's great they went back to school, when she really doesn't think that. And I feel, I feel the same way about the trimester. I mean, I didn't think it was a good idea. I don't feel like I should be forced to say, I mean, obviously it was implemented, but I shouldn't be forced to say, I think it's great.
Well, Mark might be able to just step in on the, on the conversation on this. I don't know if that's his plan or not. We could take a quick break, but, um, when we. Yeah.
Well, I just, I think there may be a little bit of confusion on, um, to me, a little bit of confusion on if you vote against something, something, we do have an expectation also that as a courtesy, you explain your objection. And then, uh, as a board member, what I see is that we still have an obligation to not impede that going forward. That's, that would be to me, the unity. If, um, if one of your constituents asked you, uh, you can, in my opinion, still say that you voted your, how you felt. If the majority passed it, it's moving forward, it's being implemented, you still have your concerns and that you can still express those concerns if asked by the constituent. But it comes to a matter of, of making it not go forward, of working against it. Then that would be, and I just, I don't think it means that you have to say, oh yes, I think it's great. Because you've already explained in the meeting when you took the no vote, why you took that position.
Right, but it says, once decisions are made, then we have to do, all support them. Maybe it needs to be.
Support the implementation.
But it doesn't say that. It says, support them, like support the decision.
So let's take, we're going to move to implementation.
Unless I have. Yes, as we speak with one voice, one, once decisions are made, we collectively support them and move to implementation. So when. On the, on the voting to go back to school, I, I've been asked regularly. About that, right, and I'll say, well, the board voted, right, and then this is what the board voted for. And I was against that, I said, public health more important than, because, because we have technology, right? And I didn't explain what it was, I was like, but that is not what the board did, the board actually, we are going back on these days and we're doing this, and I support that fully. That's what I do as, as your fellow members, that's what I do, I support it fully. And I will talk about why we're doing it and everything that you guys have brought up, everything that we've learned from, from Dr. Rory and the, and staff, like. I'll share all of that. Right, and why that decision was made and support that decision fully. I don't have to say, I love the idea of it, I love it. But I can still be supportive, we want our students to be. It's, it's about collaboration and teamwork, I guess is how I take supportive. And as a, as a role model. It's like. A norm, a courtesy as well, so. Does that help? But that's what, I mean, I remember learning, that's why I was looking at our mark, is Mark was in that CSBA session. But I, when they discussed this, like in. What you need to do is a first hundred days as a school board member, whatever, and it was. When this, like, if you lose, like, come in with your opinion and you're a candidate. You have all this individual stuff, you have to drop all that, you come in. And you can have an opinion and you could share it in discussion, and when your opinion loses, and that's why I say all the time, my opinion lost. You. You have to, you have, we have to come back together and get work done, and so. They talked about how you have to let all that go, and then you have to have this unity to work together to implement. To get the work done, otherwise, why did we take an action, we're still just, you're still just fighting over it, the fight's over.
Well, no, it's going to be implemented, you take the action, so you implement that plan.
Right, so why wouldn't you have unity with that plan?
Because to me, unity means that you are agreeing that that was the best thing for our students. And if you didn't, that, that you're being asked to say that that was the best for our students, even if you don't agree that it was.
Unity, the state of being united or joined as a whole. You're, you're putting like your own personal feelings in there, it's a business decision of what we're going to do, and then when a team. It'd be like in a marketing concept, only one marketing concept is going to go forward, everyone's going to throw these ideas together. Right, they're only going to pick one, and you still have to work together the next day.
Right.
Right, so what, you're not going to sabotage that, because then you're sabotaging the entire corporation, you're sabotaging everything. So you would work in unity to move forward, that's the whole point of it.
Well, you're moving forward because you're implementing it, but to me, you have respect for somebody and you appreciate someone bringing up a different opinion.
But we all appreciate all the different opinions, I learned so much from listening to everyone. We all appreciate each other's opinion, that's what the discussion and deliberations for. And then in turn. Once the vote takes place.
Well, do.
Takes place.
We, we had a different Brown Act conversation and. An example was given, if you come out a closed session and a reporter or somebody asks you how you voted. You can say, I did not. The majority voted for this, I did not. You don't have to say just what the majority did.
Well, yeah, you can always say that you, well, it, it won't be the majority, it'd be four to one, and I'm the one, I'm the one who voted against it. But what the board, because the board is our collective action, our vote. Right, so what the board has decided on is X. I so wanted A, I made my case for A, I was passionate about A. They didn't go through, and we're going with X, and I'm a support X because I care about the students. That's why the unity happens, because without it, then you're tearing at the fabric of the foundation and you're not supporting all the kids. So it's like, yeah, I lost, I totally lost, but I'll give them next time, if this comes back up again, I'll be better prepared, or maybe I've swayed a couple of people to be on the fence. Right, but for right now, this is what we're doing, and I'm fully behind it, I'm going to do what I can to support it, that's what unity is.
I.
Just like unified school district, unity.
Right, I, I see that you go forward with the decision and it's being implemented, and as a board member, you shouldn't. You know, go around and speak negatively about it, but if asked, I think you need to tell the truth.
Yeah, you voted against it, fine.
Well. I think that speaking with one voice, my interpretation is that we all say, we said, we. You know, that we are implementing this and now we all think it is great.
I don't, I don't know how speaking with one voice means it's all great. I mean, it could be speaking about there's a fire or something else, we're just speaking with one voice. Where does, where the voice is the action, that there is a vote. And we voted to go with tribesters and to start at this date, right, like, that was the vote. And the one voice is that we all concur, that was the vote, and the vote was four to one.
I guess I just agree to disagree.
Okay.
I'm, remember the Normandin and, and member Vickers, member Perry, I, I thought Jan or member Vickers had a great comment about. In the language of the protocol, it says, we collectively support them. You know, that would be the decisions, but it sounds like we collectively support the. Implementation, which I know member Perry said that she agrees with and. And we also support the work and the purpose of the board in making those decisions. And so maybe we just need a little fine tuning on the, on the language in that protocol. And I think. President Normandin, do you agree that? Member Perry is able to say that she dissented from a particular vote, but also supports the work of the board? Meaning that once something's voted, that is the vote? Because maybe we just need to add something to that last sentence that. Reminds people when we are maybe speaking publicly about how a vote went or a topic went, that. We fully support the implementation, because that would be supporting the, whatever the majority vote was. And we support the value of that decision-making process. And the, recognize the right for people to. Obviously make known what was already in the minutes that they dissented and then move on.
I like that Kelly. And also many people don't look at the minutes, so they're just asking you, they don't, they don't have all this background about who voted what way.
I think, you know, I think what I hear everybody saying, including, including member Vickers, is that we want to show that we support. The work of the board once the decision is made, and so as a protocol, as a board member, always remembering to reference that. We fully support the implementation, we fully support the work of the board, this was the vote, and then moving on.
Every collectively support them as them as each other, that we, that I voted against something, but I still support everyone because I'm, and. Them as in all the work and, you know, us as a unit, and then we go into implementation of whatever the action was.
Yeah, so maybe if, I'm not sure who's the, um, the, who's the notekeeper, the record keeper on these protocols, but I would. I would suggest changing them to support their, support the implementation and the work of the board. And. Maybe, maybe we just need to, I don't know if everybody's looking at this document together, this is to all five board members. Because I. I do see where it says, we speak with one voice, once decisions are made, we collectively support them, but we don't all support. The decision, we support the work of the board, which is that majority ruled.
Right.
And that's them as the board is what I, how I read it.
Just say we collectively support majority rule.
Okay, what do you guys think about that?
We speak with one voice.
To me, the, the issue of following the democratic process is that we all have our opportunity to make a case for or against what's before the board. And if the majority of the board is against it, it's not going to pass. But if one or two on our five-member board is against it, it will still pass. And if we do our very best of trying to convince other members to what we feel strongly about, and we don't succeed. Then we have to, to me, like, give it a rest, I mean, it's, we, we made that effort, and then, again, when you vote no, you can say. You know, I still feel very, very strongly. For the reasons I stated, and so I'm going to vote against it. Sometimes you can start out against it, and then you end up deciding that you're going to vote for it because you feel that your reasons pail to the greater good. It's just, I don't think there's one answer that fits all cases. But I think the overall for me is that. We just don't want to impede forward progress that the majority has voted for.
No, I agree, we shouldn't impede forward progress.
What do you think of that, member, because we collectively support majority rule, meaning that once the decision is made, we. We do our best to respect him and like Jan said, or Senator said, you know, that.
Majority rule.
Majority rule. And the implementation, we don't have to support the actual, you know, position, position that we might have dissenting on, with that, clarify, clarify.
Yeah. And that we move forward then.
Okay, Kelly, you completely broke up, so I didn't hear what you said.
Oh, I'm, I'm reading it as you're, as you're updating it, so you're, you have it typed out, I think, based on what we just. Went through, we collectively support majority rule, Jan, or member Vickers had suggested that. And I think we speak with one voice, once decisions are made, we collectively support the implementation and the work. The real value of the board, I, I think that looks great.
I just want to make sure that the one voice, we're all supporting the implementation, but we might not have just supported the decision, right?
Yes, and I think that one voice is supporting the implementation, you know, bringing that voice forward, that we support. What our school district is doing now, we support the work that went into the board's decision, and we support the majority rule, and. I don't have any problems with that, I haven't heard anything from member Kelly though as well.
I agree with you. I was just trying to look up under government's documents as far as where this comes from. The speaking with one voice, because every board I've been on, it's always been what has been required of a board member.
I'm opening the document that. Victoria is actually writing in, give me one second to get. Okay. Okay, is everyone good with the changes to unity of purpose? Where do you want to keep looking, Jen? If it's okay with everyone, I thought, since this is a workshop, we can just call each other by first names and. Yeah, are you good with unity of purpose the way it is, it says, we speak with one voice. We, we speak with one voice, once decisions are made, we collectively support the implementation and work of the board. He said, and then the next line is we collectively support majority rule.
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, do, are you good with that? Kelly?
Um, yes, and I wanted to also comment on member Perry's question on the unity of purpose, because I agree with that. But I actually had a suggestion of something to add before that, so I don't know if you want me to wait and we can come back to it at the very end.
No, go ahead.
So, you know, I think opening those protocols and looking them for the first time as a new board member, I also kind of shared like, oh, unity, like, everybody does have to be one. Even though we know that that's not really the definition, especially once you become a little more experienced and well-read in governance. Something that I liked, maybe to add before that would relate to our moral imperative, which I think we all share, I don't know that we really need to debate it. But it would maybe set forth why we have this unity section, and. I believe the moral imperative of our board is this relentless commitment to learning of all students. Right, I think something to that effect could frame why we are unified. Why we deliberate and debate and then take actions, you know, that, that moral imperative, so I don't know where we would discuss that, but. Something that sets forth what we're all working towards.
Adding that in there.
Victoria, maybe right underneath unity of purpose. Let me just put it right under unity of purpose and put moral imperative, or do you want, are you thinking, Kelly, are you thinking on top of that? I was thinking like right under, it says unity of purpose and then moral imperative?
It's up to you, I just know that if, whenever I start work and thinking with my board member hat on, I think about why are we doing this? Right, why would we have to, you know, strive towards this unity, and that is that, that moral imperative, we used to call it vision, right? And like old corporate speak, but this is just, you know, what's our, what are we here for, we're here, we're committed to the learning of all students. So I think it makes sense above it, but I would not be, I would not be sad if it was below it too, that's.
I'm just, I'm just looking at the document, so if it says government, governance team protocols, right, and then. I think just moral, moral imperative, relentless commitment to learning of all students. Without anything else between that and unity of purpose, isn't very clean. It could be. What unites us is our moral imperative.
Yes.
And that could just be right, then it falls under unity of purpose, and it starts with, this is our statement. Of why we have a unity of purpose is what unites us is our moral imperative and our relentless commitment to the learning of all students.
Yeah, that is, I think that is, you know, the moral imperative is kind of why we're here, right, we're all here for this, you know. Commitment to, to, you know, the, the learning of all students, that is our, our moral imperative, it's why we're all sitting in these chairs, so I like what Victoria has.
Yeah, that looks good, and, and are you okay with that placement, because as I'm looking at the place, I mean, it could go out of place now, it kind of defines it, right?
Yeah, I think that's fine, thank you.
Okay, everyone else good with that? Jan, I know you, I know you went off screens, but your mic works better, I just wanted to hear, you're, you're good.
Yes.
Awesome, okay, so can we move down then to. The protocols. So the board member protocols within a board meeting. And then. We could go around robin and see if anyone has comments or.
I thought we were going round robin on this.
That's what I was going to do, yeah, that's, yeah, well, you did, you did your purpose, I got confused, I'm like, okay, well.
Okay.
I think we're all good there, so, okay, so then Jan, do you have any comments, questions? If you're limited to two on the protocols, and then we can just go around.
Carol, I'm trying to access the current document, I'm looking for it, so go to someone else, please.
Okay, yeah, Jim, do you have any? Just, I'd be walk off for a second.
Who you talking to?
I'm talking to you, Jim, do you have any questions on protocols?
No, I, I just want to let you know that I'm having difficulty with my computer and.
Yeah, you just broke up, you just froze. Jimmy, you're frozen. I'm going to move to Kelly and maybe you're going to have to. Log back in.
That's fine, and Carol, do you want us to just ask questions on one, or do you want us to ask questions on all of the protocols in the round robin format?
Which, whichever ones that you want to speak to, because I'm not sure if everyone's, I mean, maybe we end up talking about all of them, but I wasn't sure if we needed to, so that's why I thought around robin works better.
Okay, and some of these, I'm sorry if you just. Okay, um, and some of these, I'm sorry if you just might just have to clarify some of these for me. But regarding protocol two, setting the board agenda, um, I like the language. I just want to make sure I understand it, which is if we expect that something is going to garner a lot of public input, that we try and structure the agenda so that the, the public can hear those items first. Um, I, I think that's a protocol. I think I've seen that that happens, but I just want to make sure that, um, that that's in there on setting the board agenda. I see considerations, you know, for maximum effectiveness, you know, anticipated discussion. I, I think that's fine. Is that typically how you set the agenda?
Yeah, I think that, yeah, Jessica answered. Good.
Yeah, we try to set the agenda so that, you know, there's, um, that oftentimes the, the items own have more discussion. We're on the front end, but, um, sometimes we don't know if it's going to have a lot of discussion necessarily. And so, you know, uh, but if we do, uh, kind of recognize that, we can obviously during the meeting itself rearrange it as well.
Yeah, yeah, as a courtesy for public. Okay.
We've done that, we've done that several times where we recognize, you know, let's move this up or, uh, for example, the student board reps might have had to gone, go home for some reason. Um, they have to study and, and there's an item that we want their input on. We may move that up in the agenda at the beginning of the meeting simply to, to do that. So.
That's great. And I think that's worded in there correctly. I'm comfortable with that, uh, the wording that I saw.
Okay.
Carol, did you hear my comments before?
No, you, you said, I'm having problems and then you froze.
Yeah, the, uh, for some reason, uh, on Zoom on the school board's computer, it keeps throwing me out. It's particular when I talk and I've been talking with Anasia today about that. And, uh, he suggested I turn off the video, but I've been turning off the video and it seems like I do talk, it just throws me out. So please, uh, no, I'm not being disrespectful or anything. It's, it's just, uh, the, that, my home computer, I have no problem with Zoom with this, but there's something about the district's, uh, computer, uh, that I am having challenges. I was, yesterday I was on the school board association meeting and the same thing happened. I would ask, I'd make half a co- comment and then I'd be thrown off and no one would know. So that, that's what's happening. I'm sorry.
That has to be frustrating. I'm sorry you're experiencing that and I'm missing your comments.
I'll try to use, I'll try to use, uh, fingers as far as.
Okay, do you have any comment or question? On any of these, while, while your technology is working?
I do. Yes, I do not.
Okay. Kelly, do you have another one?
Yeah, I just have two more and then I'll be done and yield to someone else. On number four, meeting norms. Um, I just maybe wanted to, gosh, I don't want this to come off the wrong way, but just in the interest of everybody's evenings, maybe put something in there that we seek to, even though we're so grateful, try and limit public praise. I know it's so hard, but, um, just because these meetings go late. Um, and I hope that doesn't come across the wrong way. I don't know, does anybody disagree with me?
Um, I think keeping discussions moving forward, does that need to be said? Kind of is that, right? So we look at the timing of the meeting, right? And, and, oh, I want to read my kindness thing. You probably shouldn't read tonight. You know, the meeting is going to be five hours long. Right? That kind of thing. So I think that's how I read that one, you know, is should we be saying that? And there are times when I'm just like, we should skip and go to the next thing. So unless you don't feel that says that, I think that's probably the best place to.
I'm fine with that, unless anybody else. Um, yes, okay. And then my last one was, um, number five on community input. I've just noticed since the pandemic, we do have some, uh, quite a, quite a bit of other options for community input. And I don't know if we want to update our norms, because maybe if these are things that we are, are protocols that we're able to decide as a group, you know, I would love to see written comments still be accepted and then shared with the board and then posted, I believe. Um, Mrs. Weber can correct me, but then I believe all the public comments are then made public if they're, they're submitted in writing. And, um, you know, you made the, the question before about what do we do when we have limited time and so many people that want to have their voice be heard. And I think having that done in writing and shared is, is another option that maybe we might want us to stick with. Would this be the appropriate place to put it?
This would be appropriate. And, and I was thinking the same thing. I was just wondering whether I, you know, if no one else is thinking, I was gonna say, we could bring it back at the end of the pandemic and figure out whether we want to continue it, right? Because we can always bring it back and have a discussion around it. Um, but I'm good if other, I would like to add that language as well if, well, I didn't ask Victoria about how much more work that is for her to put all that together for us either, though.
And I think it's respectful to those people that maybe, um, you know, everybody has a different comfort level with speaking in a large group or speaking to a large group. And I like that it, it does allow those comments to, to be submitted that way. Um, you know, as long as they're appropriate and respectful, they can still be critical, but, uh, I'm open for other people's input on that.
Jan, do you have a comment on that?
Well, what I found interesting when we had the written comments is that, um, a, a written comment can go way beyond what would have been a three-minute spoken comment. Uh, what we found when, before we added the comments that were similar to in-meeting participation, where they call in and can speak to us, uh, on the certain item, that there was, seemed to be a lot of commenting. You know, I understand people would have discomfort coming and speaking at a meeting, although until we reached this point where we were doing this, I, if that was the case, we wouldn't have known it because people just didn't come. I just have mixed feelings about it. I think I, as far as adding it to a norm, that I think we need some more time, um, to discuss that.
Yeah, maybe. Similar amount of words, right? We know, I'll know about how long you can deliver, how many words you can deliver in two or three minutes, whatever our norm is, but, um, okay, I don't disagree with that. I, I do like the idea that we have it decided on and share it so that the, the public knows what that is.
Well, and so Dee, what's your thoughts on that?
Well, I think it's the public's right to comment. And I think if they are comfortable writing in instead of watching and coming in at just the right time, that we should have that available for people.
Okay, and Jim, can you give me a thumbs up or thought on that?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I, I think it's great. In fact, if I'm understanding it, we're talking about that, that this would be posted online after the board meeting.
Yeah, we might consider to receive written comments, not that we read them aloud in the meeting.
We'll receive them and put them on, uh, and put them on the, the web. I think, I think that's just fine. And, and like a lot of things we do, we do read either before or after a meeting. And so we give them the, the same type of respect that we, we give others. So I, I think that's just fine.
And, um, Carol, I think we're going by first names now. I do like too, that I know that everybody has received that same comment. Sometimes when I receive individual emails from community members, I don't always know who else has received that. If Member Kelly maybe was DCC'd or maybe Member Normandin was sent that same complaint, it's sometimes a guessing game. So I, I actually really like that format, um, in some ways.
I like it a lot. I think it's been a big change and allows people who can't make the timing, or they not want to speak in public or whatever it is, it allows them the space. And, um, you know, you do not have to give your name and information in order to make public comments. So the fact that people can make anonymous comments as well, um, even, even though I wish they would, in the sense of like just knowing, but if they're right. And so I like it as well. And it's not, it's not vertiginous to continue to do outside of the pandemic. I'm all for it. I guess that was, I did need to ask Victoria beforehand and how much time.
Yeah, and, and I think we can, we can talk about that. One of the things I'd recognize though, and as a comment that Jan made, and I think it's a question actually for Mark, is that, um, you know, I, I recognize that some boards and, and governments, um, have been, obviously during the pandemic, allowing both, right? And what they've been doing is limiting, uh, the written, just so that it's the equivalent of what be like roughly three minutes of verbal versus letting someone write, you know, a, uh, for a public comment, uh, written could be, you know, a, a thesis statement. Um, we should probably think about limiting it to a certain amount of words, which I think the board has the authority to do. So, you know, I think San Diego, I was looking at the city, uh, they limited to 200 words. I've seen some limiting it to 150 words. Coming up with some kind of limitation, I think is fair, because that then allows the person who's doing the in-person, who is limited to their three minutes, to also have the written to be limited in size and scope as well. Uh, so that it's not something that, um, is, uh, you know, a burden, um, on staff or necessarily to kind of put in multiple pages of potentially one person, you know, writing something. So I would ask the board to consider that. Uh, come up with, uh, you know, 200 words or whatever it might be. And I'm assuming Mark that that's okay to do.
Yeah, I think so. And I agree that, uh, you know, the, the, uh, um, I don't know if it's been in Orange County also, but the ACLU, um, in San Diego and Imperial County, and I know in Pomona Unified, um, have sent letters, um, uh, to districts that are only allowing public comment in writing. Um, and saying that under the Brown Act, the right to, uh, public comment is to actually speak to the board. And there are differences of opinion on that in the pandemic context, on whether the executive orders that have softened, uh, the Brown Act rules, um, allow that and the way it's worded with, you know, other technological means and things like that. But the, I think the reason I mention that is the core in, in the non-pandemic environment, the core right is to, um, speak to the board at a meeting, um, which you're allowing now, um, even in the pandemic environment. But you wouldn't want to have a practice where comments to the board, um, that are in writing exceed what people who actually come to the meeting and speak are, are allowed to do. And so I, I completely agree that it would be, uh, you don't want to create, open up a can of worms by, uh, in some ways, making it more beneficial to, uh, to comment in writing than it is to comment in person.
I agree with, uh, both the previous speakers and I think what Victoria has written so far, where she talks about via a public comment form limited to 200 words, if we just would put that in there.
Well.
It's 200, about three minutes?
I was gonna say, I would, I would be happy to leave Dr. Gloria to figure out what that is and to put that in there for us. Enough, if you guys are all good with that, to figure out what it, because he could check with other, he could check with other groups and see how they came up with their, their word count, if you guys are okay with that.
That's fine with me.
If there is a concern that, uh, a speaker needs some time to, uh, warm up and get to the point, then if they submit a written comment, they could edit it when they got to, uh, the point. But I would, I would hope that the written comments would also address the specificity of the agenda item and not just use another comment um, to say whatever was wanted to be said. I mean, I, you know, I really think if we're going to e- expand that, we still hope for that same criteria.
Mark, have you heard of any way where you could take the written comment and so we can receive it, but do, does it have to get presented to the board if it's not on topic? Since those minutes aren't really there, I mean, if it's, if it's not on topic, so. Right? So if someone's writing in on something, it's not on, not on the agenda, right? They're writing about something on the agenda, but they're not writing about that item. We can figure out where it falls, but let's say it doesn't fall at all, what happens?
Yeah, I, I think what I'm hearing is to continue to allow people to provide written comments to the board and not have to come to the meeting and provide verbal comments. Um, that those written comments would not be read at the board meeting, but would be given to board members and then posted later. I think if you do that, um, number one, you're talking about something that is, um, a privilege and not a right under the Brown Act. The right is to address the board, uh, prior to or during, and there's nothing about, uh, doing it in writing. Like I said, the ACLU, um, has taken a position on that. Um, and in part because of that, to get to your question, um, yes, I think you could have something on the form. This is for, uh, an agenda item. Um, you could limit it only to written comments are only accepted for agenda items and they're sent to the board members prior to the meeting. Um, and non-agenda is in-person only, or you could allow people to do non-agenda item, um, within those, uh, word parameters also. Um, so I think you'd have a lot of flexibility in how you do that, because you're going, uh, you'd be going above and beyond what, um, what is required. Right now, everybody's just scrambling to try to figure out ways with whatever technological platform they're using, um, to allow people, um, to provide input. But once you're back to in-person meetings, anything, any vehicle you have for public comment outside of those in-person meetings is, you know, that you have a lot of discretion on how you structure that and, uh, put parameters around that.
So it also means that only one comment per item as well, just like a speaker. Right? So we'd apply those. We can leave Dr. Vori to have enough room in reading what that looks like, so that we're providing the same that we provide to people in person, but not more. Is that the direction?
Yes. I mean, I, there's, um, one of the drawbacks at something that a lot of districts have been dealing with is that with written comments being submitted using an email address, somebody can just create four different email addresses and comment four times on the same topic, um, just changing it up here and there. You know, that's just a practical, um, uh, reality of it. And I think it's one of the arguments, uh, that weighs against reading the public comments once you're back to having in-person meetings. Um, I don't know technologically if there's a way, uh, to prevent somebody from submitting written comments on the same thing twice, but just, you know, one being anonymous and one being with a name, for example, but it's actually the same person. But if it's just written comments that are shared with the board and posted later, um, you know, the, you're, uh, um, the downside of that is not as great.
And, uh, Dr. Vori, if you could look into that as well, to just see, maybe Mike Morrison might know there's some way to limit that as well, so that's not the same person, you know, responding 10 different times in different ways or something. But I think all of those, I think looking at the section in, in that we're not providing more, we're providing another means, but limited in the same way if someone's speaking publicly, I think would address all of these issues and concerns.
Have we had a lot of trouble with people writing about the same thing different ways?
Yes.
Yeah, lots of it.
Okay.
And writing about stuff in, in, in places that it doesn't belong and, right? So it is a lot of work for Victoria to sort through all that. I just hadn't thought about it until Mark said it the way he said it.
Well, when I saw things that weren't in the right area, I just, I just thought the person made a mistake. I, I didn't think they were intentionally putting it in the wrong area.
Oh, I didn't see the intention of that, but when you're speaking live, right, it'd be like, oh, are you speaking about this one or is that the next item? Or they might ask for something, right? So, so those, I just want to make sure that we're okay with, we can move those, because this is a privilege in being on the Brown Act. So we can move them around so they're in the right place if they're not in the right place. But if there's some technical way to make sure it's not the same person responding so much and then a word count, so it's not more than three minutes of a response. Um, I think those would be important. Otherwise, what will happen is then the, those comments become useless, because if someone's writing 10 pages worth of information, you know, one person and other people writing, you're gonna lose the various voices. You're not gonna hear them all. Right? And some people, right, point, you're not gonna read it. So I think the, the point is, is that we make it under the, the intent of what the Brown Act wanted to provide in public access. Um, because public comment is not public opinion. Those are different things, right? It's when someone writes a lot, it's trying to like, make public opinion, which is, it's a comment, comment from an individual person.
And we.
Are we good with?
To do that, and I think we're doing a good job allowing it both ways. I wouldn't want to restrict.
You went at what? Sorry?
I wouldn't want to further restrict it and say people couldn't write in. They had to call in.
You know, where that's what we're saying. We're just not making it so it's more than what, what it is in a meeting.
Yeah, I like how it is, how Victoria has it, that we'll continue to accept public comments. I think, um, for better or worse, the continued interest of the community and school governance is, is a good thing. And having parameters that work within our, our norms and our protocols is great. I like how she has it. I'm ready to move on if everybody else is.
Jim, I can give you a thumbs up if you're ready to move on. Jan, I'm assuming you are, you would unmute. Okay, Kelly, do you have any other questions? Okay, Jan.
I just finally found, got the document. I'm trying to. I just finally found, got the document, I'm trying to.
We can, we can loop back to Jan, don't, um, we're doing a round robin, so if you want to come back to it. Okay, so Kelly, I think you said you had three, and that was two.
I know that was, that was it, because I had moral imperative, and then the question or clarification setting agenda, and then I had the five on um, community input. I have no further questions on the, I think it's the fourteen protocols. I read them all, they all look fine. Thank you.
Okay. Dee? Do you have any?
Yeah.
Comments?
Was to be able to do two now, or what was? Okay.
You know, i- if it's three or four, I was just making sure everyone gets covered, right? Jim's good, Jan's reading it, Kelly just got hers done, so you're good, just go ahead and.
Okay, and we're, and we're going through fourteen. So, um, fourteen, so it's a, about the courtesy notice to the superintendent before you go to a conference, or you visit another district and so on. Well, um, now, during these virtual times, does that mean every time you go to a virtual conference, you're supposed to talk to Dr. Valoria about it before?
I send, I mean, how I interpret that is, so UCI has this whole lunchtime seminars that they have. Yeah. And so I just sent it to him, and I said, I'm gonna attend a lot of these, you know, um, I think it was like, I'm gonna attend all of them, but this one. And uh, you know, I'll share anything if there's any good information there or something, and he replied back, I'm gonna attend a couple of them too, they look good, but I just sent it to him as a courtesy, so he knew. And so my, the best way I think about this is if we go to budget conversations, it normally confuses us more around our budget, because our budget's so different, because we're community-funded. Right, so then he needs to reply to all these questions. It's easier for him to go and listen to the same thing and then help correct whatever doesn't fit within our our budget, does that make sense? And so I think some of it is that, the other piece of it is just like so that he knows you're doing that, and that you have interest in it. Right, and why you have an interest in it and stuff like that. I think it's just a courtesy.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't know that we were supposed to be doing that, so um, I, I can send him a big list.
Yeah, and then he'll just, and then he'll know what you're interested in, and then when you talk about it too, he'll, he'll already understand, like, you attended that, or he might know other people that attended it. Right, it might say, oh, these people are going too, or something like that.
Okay.
I think it's an important courtesy, that anything that we do uh, represent i- in, in our line of work, that the superintendent knows that what, what we're about. He doesn't have to agree with it, but I know when I respond to every email to every parent or others, I always uh, CC the superintendent just as a courtesy, that uh, I, when I was president of college, I was very grateful for everyone who kept me in the loop. It allowed me to have a better idea of decisions and where, where we were going uh, for the future.
I guess I, I feel like that, that isn't right, that somebody should be able to email us. If they wanted Dr. Valoria to be part of it, then they would email him. I, I think there has to be a way for con, our constituents or whoever to talk to us.
I think Jim is just sharing what he does. I don't, I didn't understand that he's recommending that we all do that. I think he was just sharing uh, what his choice is.
Okay.
Is that, I'm not meaning to speak for you, Jim, that's just my interpretation of what you were sharing.
It, it is my opinion, but uh, I think it would be nice if everyone did it, because I think that the superintendent just needs to know what's, you know, what's going on, so that he can look after for the best interests of the, of the, of the district. I mean, uh, I know that uh, uh, Mrs. Perry always talks about that when they ask her something, she refers it to someone in the, in the district. And I think that's really important also, and it's, it's just, again, I'm very sensitive at this, because I've been a similar, in a similar administrative position, and I know I can only do a better job for the organization if I know uh, what's going on.
But I think for me, I would want to ask the person if I could forward it, because I, I, I don't think that some things could be shared.
I don't think you need to send, send the email, but you could, you could just send your response as far as, as far as what you're responding, how you, what you're, what you're telling someone.
Right, and that's what I was gonna say, that's what, so what I do is, so someone writes in, I'm not gonna solve the issue, so and I might not have all the information that they need. And so I can, I if I'm responding back to them and sending them into, you know, the best place to go have that conversation is at this level or something. I am also then forwarding it to the superintendent, what my response was to that person, so that he is aware of it, so let's say it has to do with human resources, and a teacher reaches to me something. And then, you know, he passes pre-pandemic, post-pandemic, he passes Mike in the hallway, hey, he got three different, you know, different uh, emails on that, hey, you know, do we have an issue with this HR software system or something, or whatever it is, he would know, because we're not gonna actually solve that. He's gonna solve that, or, you know, Mike's really gonna solve that, but then he can check in and have that just the extra check, you need a supporter on that, we just got four emails in on this. Um, and we don't know how many he's already gotten, right? So if we get them, he's getting them from different places, and then he can all, it's, so for him, is what Jim's saying, for him to really have the pulse of what's happening, he needs to understand what people are communicating.
So, uh, so an example might be um, a teacher emails and is really upset about an in-service and thinking it wasn't a good use of time. Well, I'm not gonna send that to Dr. Valoria, because that person's name is on it, and they, they're letting me know, but that, that isn't that they want him to know and, and, you know.
What are you gonna do about that? What do you, besides the fact that, I mean, you're listening to them, but how are you gonna resolve that or support them in that? You're not gonna do that. He would need to know so that he can help support and resolve where the miss was. It's not like if we're gonna have continuous improvement, we can't have it if we don't recognize, we're gonna have failure, or we're gonna have things that don't work well. That's how we then fix it. So if he's not aware of what's not working well, then then how is he gonna be able to solve that? And you forward, I guess if you're really concerned about that, you just take off their information, and you just give them.
I mean, the way I solve it, I mean, you've asked me maybe three times, but I, my answer is, I would keep track of the people I heard from, and I would tell him about it. I would not forward the emails with their specific information.
So you'd say, I heard from three people, and they had problems with their service.
They had, yeah.
I don't, I mean, Jim could speak to this better. I, I know, in managing business, that wouldn't be helpful if I didn't know who and how and whatever, but Jim could probably speak to it better than I could on, how does that help support you?
It goes back to people not being comfortable speaking about issues. And if they're not comfortable speaking about an issue, I'm sure not gonna out them.
In the health field, we talk about splitting, and splitting is when uh, someone uh, takes a communication to someone else, as far as to try to get them to intervene on their part, and doesn't deal directly with uh, the person that it should be going to. And uh, I think that it's, it's important for the individuals who are communicating with us to know that we are one, we are of one body, and that we basically sh- sh- we, we basically uh, communicate all of our, all of our communication as far as is goes, goes, goes also to the administrator of, 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 of the district. I think you can uh, delete their correspondence, but I think it would be helpful as far as for them to know that your response is, is going also to, to the superintendent, so that, that there's, there's not people using you uh, to split as far as to, 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 to do something that is not in the best interest of the district.
And Jim, I think Mark's trying to say something.
Well, yeah, and I, I would just add, I know you've heard this from me before, but um, sometimes when a board member or an administrator um, gets information, uh, complaint, concern, or something like that, it triggers legal obligations um, to follow up and investigate. And so um, that's why I routinely um, you know, and there are circumstances where, for example, in a, uh, in the context of sexual harassment, um, where, where one such obligation exists, when somebody says, I, I wanna report something to you, but I don't want you to do anything about it, you don't have the legal prerogative to not do anything about it. Um, you have to follow up on it, so um, that is a, a concern to me with the idea that a board member will receive a complaint and then not forward it to um, a person who can address it and resolve it. But like I said, I know you've heard that from.
Right, and I understand that, it definitely, as far as some kind of uh, sexual problem. But what about an instance I had, a parent called, their son is suicidal, they don't want administration to know. They're gonna.
That's a great example, that you need to immediately let the administration know. Because the administration basically has the resources to make an intervention, and uh, and, and I think you could possibly be liable if.
You wouldn't wanna, you wouldn't wanna sit on something like that. There's no way you'd wanna sit on that, because you'd have.
Well, there's more to it. I mean, I said, oh, the the student, the child needs help, and the parent said, I'm getting them help, I just don't want the school to know about it.
Yeah.
And I would wonder what they'd be telling you as a board member.
Yeah, a way, a way I would characterize it is if any of you, if any of you receive information, the Laguna Beach Unified School District has received that information, and the entity might have obligations um, associated with that. You can't separate the individuals from the obligations of the entity, because you're all management, you're all in a position to put procedures in motion to do something. Um, and there, there could be circumstances where um, you know, the, the, in, in uh, California law and in the law of most states, in a school district setting, there is what is called a special relationship between the adults in a school district and the students for purposes of negligence and liability and the, and the duty to protect. Um, and uh, um, so I agree with Jim, that is, that is definitely an example and a circumstance where it would need to be reported.
Are we mandated reporters as board members?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask Jan, because it seems like that mental health crisis would soon, if it does not yet fall under mandated reporting, we would hope that we all treat it as if we're a mandated reporter, and it was in that nature.
Yes, yeah.
Mark, can you repeat what law that was that you decided, sorry?
Oh, you mean about the special relationship? That's just, it's uh, it's um, there's a, a section of the education code that um, that it's actually kind of strangely worded for what I'm talking about, but it says that teachers um, and public school uh, personnel shall hold students to strict account for their behavior and things like that. And so the courts have interpreted that when you, in common law negligence, where do you have a duty, did you breach the duty, did the breach of the duty cause damages? The duty uh, that school districts have vis-à-vis students is heightened, a, a special relationship. So it's mainly been developed in the courts, and it's not a uh, a statutory um, thing. It's why um, you know, there's a uh, a, a student being injured on campus um, through violence from another student. Um, there's a higher level of a duty of supervision on campus than there are in other contexts for where adults are supervising students um, or, or in a school setting um, because of that.
So are you saying that a, a constituent, a member of, of Laguna Beach, and maybe they're a personal friend, maybe they're not, maybe they're just coming to one of us as a board member, that they can't have a private conversation with us, that everything somebody tells us, we're supposed to tell the superintendent?
I don't think that's what you asked originally, and I, I also need to reference back to what section your comment came from. Your comment was about um, responding to a person and not informing, not sharing that response or sharing the inquiry with the superintendent. So which are you on one of these fourteen items, or?
Yeah. The item my mom.
Which one?
Yeah, number four, number fourteen, but Jane, can I ask everyone just one second, timeout, uh, I want, uh, I would like Victoria to put up um, board policy ninety-two hundred, because it's really what we're talking about. Um, it ties into, but if she could put it up on the screen, so we can all see it.
It's nine zero one two, Carol, right? Nine zero one two.
I think it's nine two zero zero is the policy, the, the man, let me look real quick.
Okay, cuz.
I was trying to look at it, I think it's board by, board by law ninety-two hundred.
Okay, I'm not getting fourteen, that's been my, an issue.
Oh, can you not see fourteen on, on?
No.
I can read.
That's my fault, Jan, it's thirteen.
It's thirteen, okay, got it, and I've got thirteen.
Okay.
I think it just started with, do I have to let the district know if I'm attending outside events? And I think member Perry, you know, after Jim explained it as related to just outside events, I think we came to a consensus, um, on why that might be helpful. And then we shifted over to if I receive a complaint, or I receive anything um, from a constituent, from a member of the community, I'd rather say, does that need to get forwarded on? And I have reference to that in bylaw ninety-one two, but I'd like to see this one too, Carol.
So, um, Mark, this isn't what we're meaning on, but can you walk us through?
Uh, walk you through what's up on the screen?
Yeah, for ninety-two hundred, and what was the other one? Um, Kelly?
I'll just, I'll read it briefly, it just says, you have to, this is on electronic communications, nine zero one two, board bylaw nine zero one two. Any complaint or request of information should be forwarded to the superintendent. So if you receive a complaint, if it's not a complaint, I would argue that I agree with member Perry, that doesn't need to be forwarded on. That could be private communication, but if there is a complaint or request for more district information that I, just according to the bylaw, that is what we should do.
Yeah, and I, and I also want to address um, member Perry's question about uh, you know, anybody that comes to me, I'm supposed to uh, forward it. I don't wanna, I, I don't wanna be overinterpreted. Um, if you, if you receive an email from a teacher that said, we had an in-service after school yesterday, and I think it was a waste of time. I'm not saying there's a legal, a legal liability issue of you not forwarding something like that. So we are talking about certain parameters um, operationally, whether, and whether the bylaws, the collective decision of the board on the rules for its own government, governance, what the, the board expects individual members to do with that kind of information, that's a separate question. And then the other one about um, uh, you know, I think you were alluding to, is somebody coming to me as a board member, or as just a friend in the community? That can be a difficult thing, I, I get that. You know, you, you live in the community, uh, you have for a long time, you know people. Um, and it's not always a hundred percent clear whether somebody is talking to you as a board member um, or not. I would say err on the side of caution, if it, if the information given to you is about a district issue or a student issue, and especially from my perspective as the, a, a district attorney, is that if it is anything that is um, uh, you know, an issue of a risk of harm, or um, or, or anything like that, there are, there's potential liability issues associated with not um, putting the wheels in motion for, for staff to do something about that, to look into it.
Yeah, I understand that, and I wouldn't want to put anybody at risk in a situation like that.
I, I think um, to respond to member Perry, I, I think the assessment of whether it's a complaint or a significant request for more information, and to agree with Mark, it does require some judgment, and I think it is okay to receive emails that maybe aren't a complaint, you know, I don't like the type of plants that are planted at, you know, in front of El Moro School. You know, maybe that's not a complaint that needs to get forwarded on, but maybe we don't want to be in the call of making judgments on what complaint is serious enough, and maybe as a board, we do wanna just.
Well, there's also a trust level that if somebody is telling you something, they're trusting that unless you tell them, you're not forwarding it on.
Yeah, I guess what I'm experiencing is we have such limited communication with each other, that unless we share it, how do we ever start to work at it? Well, I think it's not, it's student-related, I think the plant issue, maybe that's not a good one, but that has any. but that has anything to do with the student, which hopefully most of our issues do. We don't have any chance of getting anywhere with it if it's just sitting in our, in our box, I guess.
It's not just, it's not just about us. It's also about the administration, the leadership of the district, that they're wanting to be fully informed. And so if it's a question of you want to have the person that is confided in you feel that they can, can have their confidentiality kept, you can share the content without sharing the name of the person. So that then the leadership has an understanding, they wanna know what's going on out there. They wanna know what people are saying or what the issues that are under the surface that may be coming up. So I think there's a way to do that without what I hear you saying, Member Perry, is belying the trust that someone has that they can say something to you that they don't, that they would not want to feel that their name is attached to it. There, there, but I think the information still needs to be shared in a way that, that is comfortable. But I, you know.
Okay.
Well, I, but I, I think it's important that we go back to what Mark said on, he didn't use the word of unity of purpose, but we were talking about the unity of purpose. But he said that this is, you know, what we're all agreeing upon, these bylaws are what we agreed upon. We voted on them, we agreed upon them, and it could have been a four to one, it could have been a five zero, it could have been a three two. It's still agreed upon. And so if we have a bylaw that says that's what we're gonna do, then that's what we are to do.
I don't think we ever agreed on these.
On our bylaws? We voted on our bylaws.
No, we voted on bylaws, but we didn't vote on protocols.
We don't vote on protocols, but what you were talking about is in our bylaw.
Right.
And we voted on that. You were just talking about courtesy of making, of going to see like another superintendent or another school board or going to a event, right? You, you switched to one of our bylaws and we voted on it.
I know.
Majority rule.
Bylaws, not the, not the protocol.
Well, we, if you wanna use, as Carol referred to as interchangeable terms, we would have consensus because when we go, gone over these, twenty eighteen, twenty sixteen, twenty fourteen, whenever, we usually do it after an election. So we get consensus.
But isn't it true, I mean, protocols aren't binding. They're a nice way to be.
About respect. It's about we come up with these and we talk about them and we add things and we delete things. And then we agree to respect them that we, because we've all agreed on this is the process that we feel works in each one of these categories.
But I guess that's what I'm saying, we didn't all agree.
But we did agree, I'm talking about bylaws, so, so the courtesy. Okay.
But we agreed on the protocols.
Because, so that we.
We changed.
To them.
We do, we, we do, we sit, we sit here, we agreed upon, I went around the room and looked for consensus. And there was a consensus on that's what that was. Right, that's what we'd like to have in there because we're agreeing of how we're gonna behave with each other, how we're going to govern together with unity so that we can move forward and implement. But when you switch to, what you forward, forwarding emails, that's in our bylaw and we have an agreement that we all voted on that has unity of purpose. And has law, and by the way, so our, our protocols also have some law based on them. They're based in some law, right? And some of it's about norms. So, but Victoria, can you pull up that? Kelly, what was the policy that you read out loud, real quick?
Um, I read ninety one, nine zero one two, which is on board member electronic communication. And mostly as the new, newest board member, trying to understand the existing bylaws that I'm supposed to be acting under. And it says, any complaint or request for information should be forwarded to the superintendent in accordance with board bylaws and protocols. So that the issue may receive proper consideration and be handled through appropriate district processes. So that bylaw to me says it needs to be a complaint or request for information. So if it is just, you know, of somebody communicating with you about, you know, something that's not really a complaint, then I would say that I would agree with Member Perry, doesn't need to be forwarded on. I liked the suggestion from the fellow board members to redact somebody's name if it maybe it was something that they really didn't want shared. And I liked our attorney's recommendation to make sure that we're extra sensitive to any time there might be legal implications of not including that person's name, so.
And there's that, there's that factor that we may not always know what those legal implications might be.
That's true. And then, um, you know, and Victoria, can you pull back up the, the ninety two hundred? That's our, that's our, yeah, our limits, our board member authority? Here we go. Um, I was trying to see what days, when was this? So this was adopted in two thousand twelve, sorry. Oh, there, that, that's so helpful. So the governing board recognizes that the board is the unit authority over the district and the board, and that a board member has no individual authority. So when I said, what would you do to fix it? We have no individual authority at all. So board members shall hold the education of students above any partisan principle, group interest, or personal interest unless agreed to by the board as a whole. Individual members of the board shall not exercise any administrative responsibilities with respect to schools or command the services of any school employee. Individual board members shall, shall submit requests for information to the superintendent. Board members shall refer board-related correspondence to the superintendent for forwarding to the, sorry, board members shall refer board-related correspondence to the superintendent for forwarding to the board or for placement on the board's agenda as appropriate. Individual board members do not have the authority to resolve complaints. Any board member approached directly by a person with a complaint should refer the complaint to the superintendent or designate so that the problem may receive proper consideration and be handled through the appropriate district process. A board member whose child is attending the district school should be aware of their role as a board member when interacting with district employees about their child. That was quite difficult. Because their, because their position as a board member may inhibit the performance of the school personnel. The board member should inform the superintendent or designate before volunteering in their children, in their child's classroom. The superintendent or designate shall provide a copy of the state's open meeting laws, Brown Act, to each board member and to anyone who's elected to the board but has not yet assumed office. Board members and the person elected to the board who have not yet assumed office are responsible for complying with the requirements of Brown. So there's part of this that's in our norms, right, in our governance. It's not calling it out directly because we, we have this and then we have the laws beyond it. But we don't have any authority to solve anything, to resolve anything, and we have no administrative function. And that's why I said, what would you do with it? Like, how would you solve it? We don't have that authority. We, we have, um, you know, very part-time authority. It's when we're seated as a board. By the time we have authority. And so I, I take these as, along with, I think more from my business perspective of, you know, making sure that Dr. Vori is well aware of and of whatever's happening within the district so that he can better manage the district. Because that's what we hired him to do. And we agreed upon this.
Some people did.
So when we go back to unity of purpose, that's the whole thing, is that the board voted and passed this bylaw. And then, Victoria, can you go to the one with electronic communications? Because that's even more recent, but two thousand eighteen. That's okay, I just, I just realized I have my screen back so I could do. So that one was, we just passed that September twenty fifth, two thousand eighteen. And so we voted on this bylaw as a group, you and I were part of this, right?
Yep.
And so then we need to then follow the law, the agreements that we've had.
I agree. But there, I won't get into it, but there are other bylaws we don't follow.
What do you mean? So there are bylaws we don't follow? Mark, are we, I just realized, we're talking about one thing. We're talking about a second. Are we allowed to talk about bylaws in the middle of our?
If it relates to the protocol, I would say yes.
Yeah, and you have this list of bylaws as, as a next agenda item. So I would say for two reasons. One is what Jason said, and the other one is it's on the agenda. And so it's, it, it's kind of melding a couple of items, but, uh, but they're both on the agenda. So, yeah, they're, and they're related to one another, so you're fine.
I have just a point of clarification. So Board by Law ninety oh two approved in two thousand eighteen. That's not up for revision, but we're referencing it. And to President Normanan's point, if it was approved, then we have to follow it. And unless we're trying to write a new bylaw, which I don't have a new one to comment on, we're just kind of talking about it, then maybe this needs to get moved to another bylaws workshop. And, and we try and follow this bylaws, it's written, which is anything that, you know, complaint, contains a complaint or request for more information does at this point get forwarded because that's what it says, and maybe we need to revise it down the road.
And we just, we went through all of our bylaws in February two thousand nineteen and only brought forward the ones that we had changes to and the ones we did not have changes to, we didn't bring forward. So those were agreed upon as they were good the way they were. So we just did this as a board as a whole with agreement immunity. But the unity is following through and abiding by.
Right.
Abiding by those.
What I'm, I'm not having a problem with following the bylaws. I'm saying that we don't follow all the bylaws. It seems to be we follow some and not others. I mean, for instance, one of our bylaws is that every year you review the legal firm. And we don't do that. And I asked about it and was just told we didn't need to do it. Dr. Valori would tell us if there was a problem. But yet the bylaw says that every year you renew, review the legal firm that you've hired.
I'm, I'm reading it right now. It's ninety one twenty four.
Another one.
I believe some of the comments in reference to that with that, not just that Dr. Valori would tell us, that but when we bring those forward, if there's a concern raised, that's the time you ask it for when we renew a contract or when we do budget planning. So that that is, uh, that falls under the category of review. That's the time when you would review it, when you're renewing the contract or when you're doing budget planning.
It says you review it every year.
Well, that is every year. We renew the contract every year and we do budget planning every year.
It seems like we should have a review document.
We're not evaluating them.
Okay. I'd just say, so, so I think there's definitely disagreement about this because I just read what it actually says. But I, this one takes us off topic because I don't think this particular bylaw is anywhere about our norms. I don't think we have a, I don't think we have one about the norms of contacting the president.
I'd like to request that Member Perry submit all the bylaws that she feels are not being followed by the board. And that could be submitted, and we could have that for future discussion.
I think that'd be great. We can add that to the, the future agenda.
Maybe try and conclude this part of the discussion, since I know we have another third ahead of us on bylaws. Would it be?
Thirteen percent left battery on my computer.
Would it be appropriate to add a new norm about redacting somebody's name when following Board by Law nine zero one two? Because I hadn't thought of that, and would that be inappropriate?
We have a lawyer, a lawyer right now.
Because we're not.
Mark, can you clarify? Because I, I, you know, these are public records as well, um, in the roles of a board member. So I, I don't know that there's the ability to redact something prematurely and have a bylaw that would then circumvent Public Records Act, so just.
Yeah, I think, uh, I think that's a, uh, that's an issue. I mean, you can't, um, when, when a board member receives an email that's related to their role as a board member, it's a public record unless it falls under one of the limited exceptions. And that's one of the reasons why they should be preserved. And I, and I do think there's some risk in, in, on a variety of levels that we've talked about of, um, you know, sitting on the information or only providing partial information or, or something like that. I wouldn't, uh, I, I wouldn't recommend having a bylaw, an adopted bylaw that says redact information before sending it, uh, sending it on to, to staff.
Just, that is a fine point. Many, many people, you know, are aware of the Public Records Act now. So many people call, they don't email.
Okay. So I, are, are we? Dear, are you okay with whatever bylaws you feel are not being followed? You will, you'll submit those to me or to Dr. Valoria, and then we can put those on a future agenda?
I'm happy to do that if anything will really happen with it. I'm not happy to just make work for myself and then just have it, oh, well, we don't need to do that.
Well, I wouldn't think it'd be a lot of work. You just identify them by the number, by the number of the bylaw and turn that in, and then we can.
Discuss it.
If we're gonna discuss them, that means we're going to address your concerns.
Okay, so there'll be, there'll be a public meeting where they're discussed?
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
Not a closed session item, it would have to be a public meeting.
Okay. Okay.
Next, these were, these were what we, we discussed all of these in February.
I, I'm just saying we're not following them.
I think there's disagreement on that, so, but that's what I mean. So that we'll have the discussion, but we don't, we can't discuss the ones that we can't discuss now that aren't tied into the norms.
Okay.
And, and so I did wanna, my, my question to Mark was really to the norms. What norms do we have that provide board member requests without having that last item? And as soon as I find the norms again, or I don't know, Victoria, if you could put the norms up because I think I closed my document.
The governance norms?
Yeah, yeah, I think I closed it in trying to open something else. But I just wanted to look at them real quick to see if there's other norms.
I, yeah, I have some.
That are, that would allow us to facilitate what we're trying to do in that last item. Hang on, here we go. On my document, so.
Do you agree with thirteen, thirteen, though? Do you, didn't you agree with thirteen on the visiting programs that's in there?
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, so. Should we just then see if anybody else has issues with what's written or wants to add anything else instead of getting into all the bylaws?
Do you wanna what? What are you asking, Kelly?
Should we see if anybody else has issues with the protocols as written, the numbers one through thirteen?
So we. That's what I was doing.
Yeah.
Mark, very good, yeah. So, Mark, if we can, um, look at, do you have a copy of, of the protocols?
Yes.
Or do we need to put it up on the screen? Okay, okay, so, um, we have how to get your questions answered before, right? That's part of, in that process, we could ask about something we're interested in getting more information. And during that time, right? Is that one of the areas that we could cover, what we're trying to do in twenty? What, I call it, because it's the last item, or try to do in, um, in requesting more information? We could do it there, and then, um, in the agenda, setting the board agenda. You know what, Victoria, though? I can't, I can't read that now, though. Following the established template of superintendent. So we can also, is there duplicity in setting the board agenda where a member can request? I can't see it. Just use scroll down, Victoria, to number two. Board members request that items be placed on the upcoming agenda. And so it could be that, I know we have our bylaw around that, that if the superintendent and the president felt like it wasn't the right time, we could express that, or if there's a, you know, like a better place or a different, it ties into something else. Or if it's something we don't think there's consensus on, we could bring it back to the board as a whole. You know, the board, the board to have a discussion about, right? So we could do that there, what we try to do with our last item. I'm just trying to see if there's other places we could do it. And then I'll wait your comments about.
I'm, I'm not sure what you mean, other places where we could do it. I'm, I'm not sure what you mean, other places where we, we could do it, I'm, I'm not.
So it seems like, so we were on, I'm sorry, um.
I think we are referring to Carol's, there's a protocol, uh, I mean, look at what number it is.
A board member request.
Number ten, number ten on the protocol is end of meeting, request for items for next meeting and future topics, which you kind of reference, Mark, in your Brown Act. Which is, this is one where it becomes, um. Oftentimes where they, we, there could be an ability to stray from the, uh, from Brown Act, right? So, um, that's what I think, um, Carol, I think Carol is what you're talking about, it's number ten.
Yep.
So where is it, where is it already in, in existence and bylaw, right, which nine thirty, nine, the. Nine three two two already has a mechanism for members to add items to the agenda. And then request for information is, um, I think you pointed out was, um. Potentially in the governance standards or in number three, uh, or somewhere else, I don't know, uh, maybe number one as well. Does that answer?
Yeah, so, so that we could use Board Policy nine three, nine three two two, right, as a way to, to, for board members to put information on the agenda. Um, we could use number one in our protocols to ask for information. Right, if the information is something that, uh, has already been presented, it could just be shared, that's already been presented in, you know, in updates. Board member can then go find all the information in the updates, right? Um, then read it. And then, sorry, Navio, I really did mess up my tabs, not having two screens.
Yeah, Carol. Um, you, you know, in the, in the board member standards, as, as far as information, it says. That board members should seek information from resources available to me before seeking staff assistance. So that is saying to me, you, you know, we should all be doing the research on our own and then if we. Run up against some wall, then ask for staff assistance, we should be making calls on our own, we should. It's, it says we should be seeking all the information we can.
What, but that would be going through your updates for the information.
Yeah, but what about more, I mean, the updates don't have everything. The resources available to us are much more than the updates, I mean, it's the whole internet, it's the whole, we can call anybody. It's not, the, the resources aren't just the updates.
Which, which one are you reading out of the thirteen, of the?
We're, we were talking about seeking information. And in seeking information next, and it's not under the individual board member standards. It says that we should basically find the information as much as we can ourselves without asking for staff assistance.
Yeah, I'm asking which number are you reading?
It's on the one below it, um, I think, um.
Oh, in, individual board member standards.
So that, me saying. You know, we, we can call other boards, we can call anybody we want, we can do whatever research we want. Um, and probably should before we go to and ask the staff to spend their time.
See, that's not how I read that, I just, I read it as before I asked, um. Jason about, um, to spend time on workman comp question. Right, I'd go look, because I, I asked about a while back, I'd go reread all the information he provided on that. Right, and then I'd search through all the other things I've had over all the years and see what else I have on workman comp to answer the question. Because I'm, I'm asking my question within our district, right, so I'd use the information that's related to our district. That's how I see that, I don't know.
Hmm, yeah, I, I guess once you don't see it in the same way.
Well, because I don't, I don't think it's my role, though, to like call another superintendent or a call and, and ask them, what are you doing over there?
Why not?
Because our superintendent meets with all those other superintendents on a regular basis, probably even more regular. In the pandemic with all the online stuff, but meets with them regularly and is part of a group of superintendents and they are talking about all those things and. And he could provide that information. He could provide it in, in much greater detail normally when I've asked him and in great detail of what it is that I'm inquiring about.
Well, I'm thinking of.
And, and other things, then he could share that information back out, sorry, I meant those, he could share that information back out to everyone so that we all have the same information.
Well, I think of it like when I, I thought it would be a good idea to have a science expert. Nobody was joining in with me, so I called different districts and asked how they did it and what they did and how they're, you know. I, I, I don't agree, I think we can definitely do our own research. And a lot of things that we look at aren't within our district, there's something we're considering. And to look at how it's being done somewhere else, I think really helps.
Well, I don't, like, I'm, I'm trying to pull up CSBA's professional government standards and I don't see it in there. I don't think we've updated ours in a while, because this is from CSBA and I don't think that's in there anymore. So I guess what I, I would like to ask Victoria is to, um. Is to, uh, she could provide us with what the current ones are, but that's not on there anymore, so this was CSBA standards. Right, and they don't have that in there, that line anymore.
Well, I understand, the, the point is to save staff time if you can do it yourself.
But, but there's a fine line between the administrative role, right? And the, and the governance role and the superintendent is the only person who goes between those two. We stay in governance and, and everyone else, although.
Sure, it's that fine of a line in the sense that, um. I can bring information forward and say, you know, this is what I learned that they're doing in such and such a district. And, uh, is there any interest in looking into that here? But then the, the actual data collection that applies to this district is specific to this district, which.
Right.
Uh, the administrators, the leaders, whoever would be involved in providing that, whether it would be something from Mr. Dixon's office or something from. Uh, you know, a, a high, uh, the high school, that they would provide that input, I'm thinking of the year that we looked at doing international baccalaureate. It wasn't, um, you know, board members expressed interest because we had input from the community to explore providing at our school. But there, but the board members did not put that together. The, the, um, when it was agreed with board direction that there was interest in looking into that. Then all the information that was obtained from other districts where they had those programs was done by administration. And brought to us. Other than that, it just becomes very fragmented, so, you know, I.
Well, if everybody has the same information, if somebody does research and they give the articles. To be distributed to the rest of the board, or they talk to Dr. Valori about it, so he can give that information. How, how is that? I don't, I don't.
I, I understand, I understand, and I think other, others do clearly what's behind this, so let me give an example. You come across something that exists in another district that we don't do here and you want us to do it. So you compile a packet and whatever vehicle we put in place to ask for items to be. Uh, agreed on with consensus to have a majority support, you distribute that, your packet of research. To the other four board members and it doesn't fly. Then how are you going to feel about that? There's no administrative time involved, there's only your time, but it doesn't have anybody else's interest. So I don't know that there's anyone stopping you from doing that.
Well, that's exactly what I did.
What happens on the other side is that we have an item that does come to us that was agreed on. And you have stated that you feel that the research provided is not adequate, that's a different issue. So I think we need, I think we're getting a combination of issues and concerns here that are, that are not clear. Because that is, that's, that second example is a definite different issue.
When we don't have information.
No, when you feel that the information provided is not. Is not what you want, or you don't feel that every district around us has been asked, or every district in another state or every, whatever. That it sends a message that there is an adequate work being done to prepare us to make decisions. And I don't happen to agree with that.
Okay, I don't, I also don't think it has to be every district and everywhere, but an example I would think of is the trimester system. I don't think enough research was done on that, I don't think we had.
Okay, I, we are so off topic and it's, it's eight thirty at night.
We are way off topic.
We're way off topic, I'm going to ask, um, Dr. Vorio or, uh, Victoria to look up the CSBA. Uh, the board roles and the individual trustees of the board, because that's where we get that information from. And then update that and we can bring that back at another time to look at that, that piece. Do you, so that it's more current and we can see if we agree upon what they're suggesting now, because that one was really old.
Well, other, other board members do their own research, they look at what they, their packet they're given and that's the start. Then they do their own research, I thought that's what we're supposed to do. Otherwise, we're looking at, you know, what the administration had time to do.
Can I suggest we move?
We're, we're going to move, we're going to move on, um. And I was going to actually suggest that maybe we table. Go ahead, Jim.
Uh, we've, we've asked Dee to give us a list of the, the protocols that she doesn't believe that we're following and I think that's a great start. But, uh, I think we should move on or we should, uh, end the meeting and set another time to give full, full amount of. Uh, time to all of these, uh, policies.
I was, I was going to move to table the, uh, or ask for permission to table the board policy. For bylaw workshop and then come back to this at another time.
So move.
Um, Victoria, can you do a, a roll call? Vote on table and, and, uh, do, do we have to give a timeframe on one tabling, like just next available, does that count?
Tabling or preemptive motion?
I'm sorry.
Able preemptive, I get confused, there's two different things that, and Victoria knows them.
I know, so I'm waiting. Do we need to give a timeframe or just the next available time we can do this? How does that work, Victoria?
Technically, it should be the next meeting, but. I'm gonna defer to Mark.
Yeah, it, uh, the, yeah, flexibility in, in parliamentary procedure, you can table it to a specific time or. Um, just table it to a, a later meeting to be, uh, determined by the board president and the superintendent.
Okay, I mean, Jim, are you okay with motion being tabling it to a better time that works and that?
I think, I think it should not be with another meeting, I think it should be by itself, there, there's so much stuff in these, in these that. I mean, we're going to do this as a study session and that didn't work, so, uh, I'm for you and the superintendent figuring this out.
Okay. So Victoria, can, we have a, a roll call vote on that?
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Bickers?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Normandin?
Yes. So that is, um. That motion carries five oh and that moves us to eight, the German of, uh, meeting. So the next regular meeting is Thursday, January twenty-eighth, and can I have a motion adjourned the meeting? By Jim Kelly and, can I get a second?
Second.
Second, by Jan Bickers, uh, Victoria, can you please conduct a board member roll call?
Member Bickers?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Normandin?
Yes, so motion carries five oh and the meeting is adjourned at eight twenty-seven PM. And see you guys again very soon.
Bye.
Thank you, everyone.